Where do you?
Um, reflection.
Right behind the.
Sure. Remember what I said? Three minutes. Yeah. No. I had one of those before on my left. Not a big deal.
Been here since I was born in two thousand.
One or three of those stitches. You go back a couple weeks.
Oh, um, right down.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Good, how about you?
Good.
Person for a change.
Me too.
Is that what I can call it?
Yeah.
Oh, wait.
Your dad?
It's too late.
He's good.
I don't have it.
Classic job, you know? Very crowded today.
Funny.
It's not everything.
Yeah.
How are you?
Good.
They're painted shut like fifteen times, please. It's like the old school, when you rent an apartment. Just kind of make everything over.
Yeah, that's the one I started with. That's the one I started with.
Gotta get bigger chairs.
Seven twenty-five. Wait to thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. I'm saying you're talking up. I haven't fogged up in a long time.
When you're overweight like this.
Oh.
Ready?
Yep.
All we need is to do the other ones, it'll echo on everything.
Okay.
I'll hand that to you.
Sure, thank you.
Can we please stand for a pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and just.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Borough of Saraville Planning Board Meeting of August 4th, 2021. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Thank you. Beth, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Diadio.
Here.
Mr. Allegra.
Here.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Gen- Genares.
Present.
Mr. Mackinon. Councilwoman Marr.
Here.
Ms. Ochangay.
Here.
Ms. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Thai. Chairman Davis.
Here.
Mr. Cornell.
Here.
Mr. Alfereri.
Here.
Mr. Fowler.
Here.
We have a quorum, and I'd like to put on the record, Mr. Mackinon is not here due to the conflict of receiving notice.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Is there any memorialization of resolutions?
Not this evening.
Okay. Uh, minutes to be approved?
No.
Thank you. Communication agenda?
Not this evening.
Okay. Site plans and subdivisions?
Tonight, we have Parlin Section 1, Urban Renewal, Arsenal Trade Center, Subdivision Site Plan, Cheesquake Road and South Menasik Avenue, Block 40, Lot 1, Block 43, Lot 1, Block 44, Lot 1, Block 45, Lot 1, and Block 83.04, Lot 1.
Thank you, Beth.
Chairman, I've reviewed the notice, and it is my opinion that the board should take jurisdiction over the matter, and additionally, the application was deemed complete May 26, 2021.
Thank you. Good evening. I apologize, my voice is a little rougher than usual, but I'll try to get through it. Stephen Tripp from the Law Firm of Valence Goldman &amp; Spitzer, on behalf of the applicant. Just so everybody understands the context, the applicant here is the contract purchaser and the designated redeveloper for Section 1 of the Hercules redevelopment plan. There is a redevelopment agreement in effect with the Saraville Economic Redevelopment Agency, SARAH, and the redevelopment plan that we're proceeding under covers the entire Hercules site, which is just under 600 acres. Previously, had large-scale industrial chemical manufacturing activities. Most uses on the site have ceased years ago. Many of the buildings have been removed. What's there now is the Ashland facility on one portion of the site, and that's in an active operation. The site is undergoing environmental remediation. It was deemed an area in need of redevelopment in 2017, and the plan that we're proceeding under was adopted in 2018. And as I said, the redevelopment plan covers the whole site. It divides the site into five sections, and it's very specific about what the permitted uses are in each section and what road infrastructure and other infrastructure must be constructed in each section. And overall, the redevelopment plan contemplates a road through the site to connect Cheesquake with Hardle. And per the redevelopment plan, there's an orange road on the map, and it's also referred in the plan as the orange map, running from Cheesquake to the limits of Section 1. And it's the obligation of the redeveloper of that section to construct that road. The green and blue roadways, they're part of Section 3, and it's the obligation of the redeveloper of Section 3 to finish those roadways, which will take it out to Hardle. So, under the redevelopment plan, it contemplates phases of development that's strictly regulated, and also phases of infrastructure, road infrastructure improvements, that each developer of each section is obligated to do. This application is for Section 1 only. We have the redeveloper designation and the redevelopment agreement for Section 1. What Section 1 permits is a mix of uses, including warehouse and distribution, which is what we're here for, and the redevelopment plan is specific in allowing a maximum of 1.2 million square feet. What we're proposing are three development lots, a warehouse with ancillary offices on each one, for a total of 1,077,000 square feet, which is within the limits and is what is contemplated by the redevelopment plan. Included are plans for the Section 1 public roadway, which, per the redevelopment plan and per our redevelopment agreement, we are obligated to construct at the applicant's expense. Each lot will have infrastructure to support the particular building. We're also seeking subdivision approval because we're taking part of the 77-acre portion of the larger Hercules site. We're subdividing it into three, the three development lots, and three remainder lots, which will include the land that will remain under Hercules ownership. The engineer will review all of this in detail. I'm just trying to give everybody an overview of where we're going. The plans comply with all the requirements of the redevelopment plan in terms of the development lots that are proposed. The one technical exception is the subdivision. Your planner has determined that one of the remainder lots requires a technical lot depth variance. It's 387 feet where 400 is required, but it's not a development lot. It's a remainder lot that will really be a temporary condition because it can't be developed under the redevelopment plan without being reconfigured further. So even though it's a deviation, it's a deviation on paper only, and we'll have testimony, you'll be able to see on the map how that's the case. It doesn't affect anything we're proposing in terms of the development. We also have some waivers from the underlying land development ordinance that CME mentioned in their report regarding location of parking and sidewalks, stormwater pipe size, and lighting intensity at one particular internal intersection that the engineer will address. I think the other thing that I just want everybody to just understand is that this this application didn't simply appear on your desk, you know, last month. This has been in the works for over a year. We were designated as a redeveloper back in March of 2020. Under your redevelopment plan, we had to give SARAH a concept plan, which CME thoroughly reviewed and reported to SARAH regarding consistency with the redevelopment plan to make sure what we were generally proposing fit what your redevelopment plan required. After that, we did the detailed site plans, and before we come to you, we're required to go back to SARAH with everything we're submitting to you, have it reviewed again by CME for consistency. They again issued a report, and SARAH adopted a resolution determining that our plans are consistent with the redevelopment plan. And that's the process by which we are here tonight. What I'd like to do is start with our engineer, Kevin Webb, who will take you through the site plan and the subdivision. I also have a, our architect is here, our traffic engineer, and also a professional planner who will briefly address the relief that we're required. Now, hopefully, we'll let somebody else do a little of the talking.
Mr. Webb, can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Kevin Webb, W-E-B-B.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Certainly. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1997. I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Bucknell University, and been practicing civil engineering for over 25 years.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept his credentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Webb, you're the project engineer on this project?
Yes.
And you have exhibits with you this evening?
I do.
What would you like to start with?
Start with what I'll mark is A1. A1 is an exhibit called Arsenal Trade Center Existing Conditions, the overall Hercules tract. I'll mark it A1 with today's date. This was an exhibit prepared by Langen dated 21 July of 2021. Are you able to see this with me standing here?
It may be helpful to turn it a little bit so that the public can also see it.
One way or another, I'm going to be standing in front of it. This exhibits to put the redevelopment area in context of the borough as a whole and to identify where Section 1 is. So, the property site address historically has been 50 South Menasik Avenue. North on this page is generally to the top of the board, and that's going to be true for all of the boards that we represent. It's tilted a little bit to the right corner, but in general, when I refer to north, it's going to be generally the top of the page. As I said, the property is identified as 50 South Menasik Avenue. Menasik Avenue is here. Cheesquake Road, which the property also has primary frontage on, is to the east of the property. The total area that Hercules owns that's part of the redevelopment area is approximately 600 acres. Section 1, which is highlighted here in yellow, is only a portion of that, it's about 77 acres. As Steve mentioned, the site was designated an area needed redevelopment in 2017, and we have been proceeding for our site plan application under the redevelopment plan adopted in 2018 that was subsequently amended once or twice since then. I can go into some details about that. So, the vast majority of the site is vacant. As you can see, all these green areas are vacant land. The area that still remains active for Ashland is in this lower right portion of the site. That's the Ashland Specialty Chemicals Facility. There are remnants of where prior facilities were in terms of all building pads and things like that, but, you know, all of the other buildings have been demolished, and it's in the state of, like I said, it's limited activity or no activity in the rest of those areas. So, just some context on adjacent uses. As I mentioned, South Menasik Avenue and Cheesquake Road at the eastern end of the property, the DuPont plant is just north of Cheesquake Road. DuPont also has a warehouse along Cheesquake Road that's immediately adjacent to our site. The borough owns a significant amount of open space that's immediately south of the property. There are energy plants at the south end. This is FCL's energy plant. The Red Oak Power Plant is just to the west. And as was previously identified by Steve, we're adjacent to Hardle Street and Journey Mill Road to the east. Washington Road, of course, sits north of our site and Bourntown Avenue, south of our site. I do want to mention briefly, I know there are some folks who had received formal public notices being 200 feet from the property. We did notice based off of the tax assessors, property owners list, off of the entire redevelopment area. So there are folks maybe in Zaleski Drive who have maybe received notices being 200 feet from the property. That's the entire redevelopment area, not necessarily Section 1. That distance from Section 1 is considerably more than 200 feet. I think the closest residence on Zaleski Drive is some 750 feet away. If you were to take it from those who actually got noticed on Zaleski Drive from the Section 1 area, we're probably 1,500 feet away. So I just want to put that on the record, for those who may have received notice. With that, I'd like to go to Exhibit 2, which is really just a blow-up of this one. So this is A2, Existing Conditions for Section 1. It's the same view that you have as the existing aerial. Focus again, more detailed within Section 1. As I mentioned before, Section 1, it's nearly 78 acres out of the 600-acre parcel. This boundary of Section 1 was one of these amendments to the redevelopment plan that was adopted in 2020. We made some refinements along the southern boundary and along the western boundary just to comport with updated boundary survey information that we had prepared as part of our site plan application. That went through this SARAH process. SARAH officially adopted the amendment to the redevelopment plan to match this exact section boundary limit. So this plan is consistent with that 2020 adoption of the amended redevelopment plan. So the 50 South Menasik Avenue driveway, the historic driveway for employees when they came in here for the decades that the plant was in operation, is right at the corner of Cheesquake and Menasik. But that's not in use today. Ashland uses a driveway that's farther down Cheesquake Road as their primary access. And you can see, this is the entrance to their plant immediately south of Section 1. They have a car parking driveway, some offices, and the rest of the plant facility. This driveway, as I'll show you on a future exhibit, will be relocated as part of our development. Will be accommodated. That plant access will be accommodated through our development, albeit through a different route than is there today. The site does have, and Section 1 specifically, does have some wetlands. There are some wetlands associated with the ponds that are here that are just outside Section 1, but there are transition areas that fall into Section 1. There's another area within this northwestern quadrant of the property that has some wetlands. There are also some constraints associated with the NJDEP Regulator Flood Hazard Area. It's a little hard to see, but there is a stream corridor that runs through this wooded area. That's attributable to Pond Creek. There's a flood hazard area associated with that that leads into Section 1 and little places on the north and a little bit around where those existing ponds are at the northwestern corner. DEP has verified the presence of the wetlands and the location of those wetlands as part of a prior LOI. And similarly, they have verified the limits of the flood hazard area as part of an application that was approved in 2020. As Steve had mentioned in his introduction, of course, the site, given its historical industrial operations, does have some contamination. There is soil contamination and groundwater contamination on the site. Just give you sort of a brief overview of that. And all of these obligations that I mentioned are actually spelled out explicitly within the redevelopment agreement. So these things are already a matter of record with SARAH, but for the board's benefit, I'll give you a summary.
Just to be clear, the remediation is being undertaken by Hercules, correct?
It is, that's why I was just about to start, so.
And our obligations are essentially to make sure that when we're building, it's safe for what we want to do, is that correct?
Exactly, yes, so. Specifically, so Hercules is the responsible party for the remediation. There are, as I mentioned, soils and groundwater. So the soils is being remediated sort of in two parts. There are these, there's two aspects of the soils that are being remediated that have already been reviewed. The plan to remediate them has already been reviewed and approved by DEP. There's two separate remedial action work plans, which is the document that DEP uses to approve the plan to remediate. There's remedial action work plans 1 and 2. One relates to soil that needs to be cleaned up that's not associated with PCB contamination. And then number 2 is specific to the PCB-contaminated soils. PCBs are polychlorinated by fennels. It's associated with the prior historic use of the site, and they have some special criteria for which, why there's a separate remedial action work plan for them. In general, so the soils will be the subject eventually when the cleanup is done. Some of the cleanup will likely start before the transfer to the applicant, prior to closing, to the extent that they can. And other parts of the remediation are reliant on the redevelopment plan itself to serve as a cap over some of the soil material. So there's two phases to that as well. Ultimately, at the end of the day, the redevelopment plan, as I'll detail in a minute, again, goes through the step-by-step process of what needs to happen, when, before certain activities can happen in terms of filing for building permits or filing for certificates of occupancy. And ultimately, there will be a deed notice recorded over the impacted areas, limiting the future uses to non-residential, commercial, and industrial uses. Specific to groundwater, so there are impacts of the groundwater on the larger site, some of which that affects Section 1. There are some low pH areas in certain areas of the site within the groundwater and some other naturally occurring metals that show up in the groundwater. The remedy for the groundwater contamination is approved as part of that remedial action work plan 1. And really, in terms of the remedial strategy, we've removed the source materials. So there is no further risk of contamination into the groundwater from those source materials. When I say "we," it's Hercules has done that. So there's going to be monitored natural attenuation essentially over time. Now that the source materials have been removed, that those, the groundwater will in fact naturally attenuate to appropriate levels for the contamination. And there are also, as part of this being a closure of a former industrial site, there's some obligations under IZER, the Industrial Site Recovery Act. Hercules will be satisfying all those administrative obligations to file certain paperwork and essentially close out that IZER case as part of this remediation. So ultimately, and as spelled out in the redevelopment agreement, the soil remediation must be done prior to each lot's building permit issuance. That's with the exception of the portion of the remediation that's reliant on the construction of the buildings themselves or the paving areas that will serve as the cap. And then ultimately, that deed notice that's issued after the construction is done and after that cap is constructed will come after that building permit issuance. The groundwater will be ongoing, as I said, that's going to happen over time beyond the limits of the construction of the site. And will continue, in fact, after the buildings are occupied. And ultimately, SARAH has obligations that are spelled out in the redevelopment agreement that the letters from the LSRP working on behalf of Hercules will provide assurances that the ongoing groundwater remediation is not a health and safety issue relative to occupancy of the buildings. And again, there's obligations to close out the case from a DEP perspective, the issuance of response action outcomes that will be filed upon the closure essentially of the case and the completion of that remediation.
Okay. How about we move on to the subdivision?
Sure.
So as I indicated in my opening remarks, there's a subdivision to create the development lots and to create remainder lots that will remain part of the overall Hercules site, correct?
Sure.
And can you take us through what we're doing in terms of creating lots?
This is Exhibit A3, again, prepared by Langen. A3, Proposed Subdivision, Section 1, again, prepared by Langen, date of July 21, 2021. So what this exhibit shows, again, in black and outlined, is the full redevelopment area, and what's highlighted in the yellow is Section 1. As Steve had mentioned before, we are creating a subdivision to create essentially Section 1 area, subdivide that off from the rest of the tract. And as part of that action, we will be creating three development lots, which are highlighted within Section 1. And then as a result of that, there are three remainder lots, essentially the pieces left over from the existing lots today. As was identified at the start of our application, there are five existing lots that make up portions of Section 1. Block 40, Lot 1, Block 43, Lot 1, Block 44, Lot 1, Block 45, Lot 1, and Block 83.04, Lot 1. Section 1, 78 acres in total, or nearly 78 acres in total. Each one of the three development lots identified as these three are fully conforming with the requirements of the redevelopment plan. No relief is required for those lots. Block 43, Lot 251, which? This lot referring to A3. That will house Warehouse Building 1. Block 43, Lot 250 will house Building 2, and Block 43, Lot 249 will house Building 3. Each one of those, as I mentioned, will be fully conforming. Lot 251 is an 18.32-acre property. Lot 250, the Building 2 property, 23.12 acres. Lot 249, excuse me, Warehouse 3's, Building 3's lot, 31.69 acres. All three of those development lots will have access to a proposed public roadway, which is what is essentially the eastern leg of the Master Plan and Washington Road bypass. And this is in fact the road that's identified in the redevelopment plan as the obligation of the developer for Section 1 is to create this portion of the roadway. So it's the eastern leg of what will ultimately be a Cheesquake to Hardle Street connection. So this easternmost portion is what's obligated, and that's what we are providing.
And that's known as the orange roadway in the plan, correct?
The orange roadway, exactly. So that is a 60-foot-wide right-of-way. It will be dedicated as a public road. Separate and apart from that, as I'd mentioned before, and you can kind of see it in the background here, the existing Hercules plant entrance will be relocated. So they will have the benefit of using this new public roadway, which we, lack of originality, have called it Road A on the plan. And then we are proposing on Lot 250, which is the Building 2 lot, an access easement that will provide common access as a secondary access for both Buildings 1 and Building 2, but the primary access then for the plant. So there will be an access easement that's with rights to both Lots 251 and to the Ashland plant to be able to use that. Again, that will be the primary access to the plan itself.
And all of the new building lots, the development lots, fully conform to every dimensional requirement in the redevelopment plan, correct?
They do, all the development lots do. I can highlight where we have some relief required on the remainder lots. So the remainder lots themselves have appropriate lot areas, and they are appropriate dimensionally with the exception of one place, and it happens to be this Lot, Block 44, Lot 50. to be this Lot, Block 44, Lot 50. It's in the location, it's relative to the lot depth. Again, this is to, the ordinance defines lot depth as the distance between the mean front yard and the mean rear yard. We have a small front yard, just a 60-foot right-of-way along Proposed Road A. So it's this distance between the Proposed Road A and what is an existing, as shown in white here, existing track line internal to the Hercules plant. So the adjacent property is another property that's in common ownership with Hercules. So it's essentially, it's an on-paper condition. This is all still going to be Hercules land. Even this remainder piece will still be owned by Hercules. That lot depth is 387 feet, whereas 400 feet is required by the redevelopment plan. So as you can see, 387 to 400 are nearly compliant as is. And as I mentioned, so this is an on-paper condition, and it's really temporary. What's important to recognize about this is that this is Section 1. Adjacent to that, directly to the west, is future Section 3, as identified by the redevelopment plan. And it's in Section 3 that we have this extension of Road A. This is the missing link of the future roadway connection, the Washington Road Bypass, that will end here on its eastern end, but will connect to Hardle Street, which is located over here, all the way to the west of the tract. So there, you can envision a future roadway will be coming right through here. And in fact, that condition that happens is this lot depth relief that's required will be affected by that. It will be eradicated by a future subdivision that occurs as part of Section 3. So there will have to be a separate Section 3 subdivision that will eliminate that condition altogether.
And until that occurs, this is on basically a condition that exists solely on paper?
Correct. As I mentioned, it's adjacent to another Hercules property. This is an internal lot line here. It's not a line that's affected by the Section 1 subdivision. So again, it's temporary condition and one that will be eradicated as, at the time when Section 3 comes forward.
And there's no other conditions that require relief that are being created by these lots, are there?
Correct. None created by the subdivision will identify and have identified on the subdivision plat. There's two existing nonconformities that relate to setbacks that exist of existing buildings on the existing plant. One is, there's a temporary structure, which is actually slated for removal, that violates a setback to this adjacent property to the borough open space. And then there's an accessory structure here, a boiler house, again, to an internal lot line. Both of these properties will still be owned by Hercules. The specifics on those two, so where a 60-yard side setback is required to this external property line, we have a building that's, like I said, that temporary structure that's less than that. Oh, I'm sorry, it's 60 feet where 75 feet is required. So we have a violation of 15 feet there.
But that's an existing violation on the Hercules site that we're not touching, correct? It's not affected by any lot lines we're creating.
It is not. And similarly, is this location of this accessory building, a boiler house, is 30 foot setback from rear yard, where 100 foot would be required again, to an internal property line for a common property that's owned by Hercules, again, not affected by the proposed subdivision whatsoever. So, and I will reference that Block 45, Lot 51, is landlocked in its existing configuration, absent the subdivision on Section 1. It will remain technically landlocked, but again, it has connections to public roadways through the adjacent properties. The other existing properties that are remainder lots, actually, the plant lot already has frontage on Cheesecake Road, and of course, the lot that we talked about where we have the lot depth issue, Lot 50, now has frontage along the Road A right-of-way. So this condition is, exists today. In fact, I think we're, in some ways, making it better. We have more access to public roadways than exists in the current condition, but there is that technical condition where it's an internal property without access to public road frontage.
Okay, moving along to the site plan.
So this is Exhibit A4, site plan rendering, prepared by Langen, dated July 21, 2021. So this is a color-rendered version of the site plan, showing all of the proposed improvements, the proposed buildings, the proposed roadways, proposed parking lots, and the landscaping, stormwater management, et cetera. So as was referenced by Steve at the outset, we have a development program that's three warehouse buildings. The grand total of all three, 1,077,776 square feet gross. That's inclusive of office areas, which are included as ancillary uses within the building. Both the warehouse and the office uses are permitted by the redevelopment plan. That sum total of just under 1.1 million square feet complies with the redevelopment plan's limit of 1.2 million square feet for this section. And as I'd mentioned before, this project and this development program configuration, its sum total in every way is compliant with what Sarah approved as part of their redevelopment plan review. There are some minor technical waivers due to requirements to the underlying ordinance, but the redevelopment plan itself, this plan complies with. Specifically, as I'd mentioned before, on the subdivision plan, you know, a critical element to this section is the development of this proposed public Road A that serves as, not only will eventually be a connection as part of the Washington Road Bypass, but really serves as sort of the front door to this project, serves as the spine road, and everything sort of orients towards it. That 60-foot public right-of-way is shown in this configuration with what is an interim configuration, the intersection between Road A and Cheesecake Road. I'll have it exhibited a little bit later, which shows some future roadway improvements there that are contemplated to be completed as part of Section 3. But we have designed and have accommodated those future roadway improvements as part of Section 1 as well. So Road A is a 40-foot wide cartway, four vehicles. It's got 14-foot lanes in either direction and a center lane of 12 feet to accommodate left-hand turns. There is a temporary cul-de-sac here at the western end. Obviously, when Section 3 comes along and that roadway goes through, that cul-de-sac will be removed. But for this, at this point, we wanted to make sure that both emergency vehicles and any tractor-trailers, or frankly, any vehicles have the opportunity to turn around and get out, because this really is a dead-end condition in this temporary phase of Section 1. We are proposing sidewalks along Road A as well. That'll be within the public right-of-way and will provide connectivity to other portions that are built as part of Section 3. And ultimately, as part of it, and again, I'll detail this a little bit later, the improvements that happen along Cheesecake Road, that'll be part of Section 3. As I had mentioned before, there's a private driveway that's on Building 2 lot that will serve as the common access, secondary access for Buildings 1 and 2. There are driveways proposed off of that, but will serve as the primary access for Ashland, for their plan. Now, Ashland has obligations, I believe they may have already filed an application, for onsite improvements associated to match up their configuration of their site to this anticipated reconfiguration of their site access. So that work, the design works in progress, and I believe, again, they have an application that if it's not been submitted, it will soon be submitted to you. And they are undertaking that obligation on their own, but we have coordinated on that, and it's certainly no surprise to Hercules folks about this roadway configuration. So specifically with the Building 1 lot, just some, I'm sorry, this is going to get a little boring with a lot of numbers, but I want to put it on the record. So Building 1, 284,341 gross square feet, is proposed to have 326 car parking spaces, 53 loading docks that are located on the south side, and 46 trailer parking spaces. In each case, every building is designed such that we are separating the car traffic from the truck traffic to the greatest extent possible. There are, you know, explicit separations for that. They have, the cars will have their own unique site access points off of the public roadways. We are trying to eliminate all those potential conflicts between cars and trucks, and that's really been a driver of our design. And in each case, the truck court and the trailer parking spaces are at the rear of the buildings. For the Buildings 1 and 2 on the south side of Road A, it's on the south side. And for Building 3, it's on the north side, but again, away from the public side of Road A. Building 1 also has, I just want to detail, this is common to all three buildings. It's a little hard to see perhaps. I'm referring on the south side, on the end, the ends of the truck court, where we have loading docks. On each one, we have a drive-in door on each. I know in Mr. Fowler's letter, he had questioned the use of those drive-in doors. Those drive-in doors are customary for this type of building. We have matching doors for all three buildings. They're used to be able to provide maintenance access to the facilities, the equipment, and the internal racking system, forklifts, et cetera. It's just a mechanism by which we can get service vehicles, meaning forklifts, and again, anything. This is not used by motor vehicles on the inside. It's really just service and maintenance that will utilize those drive-in doors, again, to just support the internal operation of the warehouse. And that's true, again, on all three buildings. Building number 2, which is the one to the lower right here, 341,833 square feet, 382 car parking spaces, 50 loading docks, and 100 trailer parking spaces. In each case, the number of trailer parking spaces is limited by the redevelopment plan to no more than two times the number of docks. All three buildings comply in that regard. This is one is right on the money, is two times the number of loading docks. Building 3, to the north of Road A, this is the biggest of the three buildings, 451,602 square foot gross, 299 car parking spaces, 67 loading docks, and 126 trailer parking So in each case, where we have access driveways that serve trucks, they are 36 feet wide. For instance, we have a direct access off Cheesecake Road serving Building 1, and it carries through to the private road. Same is true on Building 2 on the western end. There's this 36-foot wide roadway. And on Building 3, we actually have those dedicated truck driveways on either side of the building, where we have car driveways, direct access to the car parking lots. Those are 24-foot wide drive aisles and driveways in conformance with the plans. The car parking spaces themselves are 9 by 18, which also complies with the plan. And like I said, in terms of, there's, I'm sorry, the, as I mentioned before, a primary focus of this layout was really trying to ensure that we have a separation of cars and trucks at every location possible. Where they share driveways, we tried to provide opportunities where cars could exit off of a truck driveway as quickly as possible. For instance, here at the southwestern portion of Building 3, there is a connection there that's as much for maintaining alternative access in case of an emergency and access for emergency vehicles. In all case, tractor-trailers, turning movements have been presented as part of the plan for everywhere the tractor-trailers need to go. We've also identified turning movements for emergency vehicles, including ladder trucks that can go through all of the parking areas and the truck court areas as well. So again, the layout and the configuration of the parking and the circulation is in conformance with the standards and actually meets all the functional requirements of such buildings. What I'd like to do now, in the context of this onsite circulation, is talk a little bit about, and I'm going to bring up another exhibit, is how access to and from this facility will affect the regional road network. So I'm going to come back to this exhibit for some further details, but temporarily, we'll move on to Exhibit what will be A5. So this looks a little bit more like A1. This is A5, Truck Route Exhibit, Prepared by Langen. It's actually, today is date 4, August 2021. So what we have shown in black is the redevelopment area. What's in yellow consists in the Section 1. And we've pulled out a little bit. We're at a smaller scale here, so we can see the area of the site in the context of the regional road network. What we've highlighted in green are the prevailing movements, the movements that we think are, will be used by trucks for those exiting. What we are showing also, in showing the exiting movements, we believe the inbound movements will be the same routes, just in reverse. So, I mean, this is intended to show movements to the site and those exiting the site. But for the purposes of what we've done here for this exhibit, we've shown yellow arrows where we think they will, trucks exiting the site will in fact connect with that regional road network. So let me describe that. So when they leave Road A in the middle of Section 1, there is a requirement, based on the site plans, is that all trucks will have to turn right to go essentially southbound on Cheesecake Road. That's signed that way. We intended to be regulated that way. Trucks will not be permitted to turn left and head north on Menace St. Avenue toward Washington Road. So all trucks leaving the site will turn south on Cheesecake towards Boardentown. We believe the prevailing movement for the majority of trucks will actually taking from Cheesecake Road, Boardentown intersection, will actually be turning left for them to the east towards the Route 9, Route 35 interchange. We think a lot of those trucks that will be heading northbound destinations into the turnpike will provide, find that route to be the best one. They'll go from Boardentown Avenue once they make the left turn, and will have the opportunity to then either turn right onto Ernston to get onto Route 9 directly, or continue on Boardentown to Route 9 itself, get from Route 9 on to Route 35, and then to areas to the north. There will be an opportunity for vehicles who have the desire to go on Route 18, or maybe point south from Cheesecake Road, to turn right on Boardentown Avenue, hit to Route 18, and then connect to those same destinations. So there will be, like I said, we expect no traffic to be north of Boardentown Avenue to places where we're already anticipating and restricting for our site. The exiting trucks will not be taking Washington Road. So the areas around Main Street, the north Ernston Road towards Main Street, Main Street Extension, those are really not desirable routes for vehicles coming to or coming, or leaving our site.
Excuse me. Let him finish with the presentation, please.
Moving back to Exhibit A4.
So you're going to provide a little more detail on the infrastructure on the lots?
Correct. So as I'd mentioned, the number of parking spaces on each site, and I'll go through them again briefly, in each case, the number of parking spaces, proposed car parking spaces, actually exceeds the minimum required by ordinance. And there were some questions raised in the professionals' letters. In the case of, say, Building 1, we're proposing 326 car parking spaces, where by ordinance, there would be a minimum of 111. This is, similar ratios are true for all three buildings. We're proposing grand total of a little over 1,000 spaces, where by ordinance, based on this program, we require in the 400s. I want to make clear that this is a speculative warehouse project at this point. Tenants have not been identified for any of these sites. And in fact, we're very likely to initiate construction on these buildings without having tenants. Of course, if we find them tomorrow, we'd love to sign them up, but the reality is, is that the certainty about delivery dates on the buildings themselves and knowing when the tenants can get in doesn't really happen until they see the building go vertical. We are trying to maintain a flexibility. You see, we've got three similar buildings, but they all have slightly different designs. And in the same cases, we're trying to maintain flexibility towards a variety, a wide variety of tenants, tenant demands, particularly for buildings of these, of this size and of this configuration, have the potential to have a little higher headcount than maybe some of your larger warehouse buildings that might be a million square feet, might be cross dock, might be more truck-centric. There's some potential for users of these buildings to be, just have a higher headcount within the building. So again, it's our desire, speaking on behalf of the applicant, to maintain flexibility in design. And we think that one of the critical parts is ensuring that we have ample supply of parking, not just by ordinance. I think your ordinance numbers are good for minimums, but we don't want to hold to those minimums and sort of lose some potential tenants along the way who would be, who would be otherwise besotted being in this location. The other thing we want to make sure, and this is true for the car parking and the trailer parking too.
Kevin, let me ask you one question.
Sure.
You're providing this additional parking, but we're well within the impervious coverage for all lots, correct?
It's true. Each lot individually and the development as a whole... Each lot individually and the development as a whole, there's an 85% maximum impervious coverage limit by the redevelopment plan. Each one of these lots is in the middle 70s in terms of percentage, so we have got quite a gap to that standard, and I think even if you took it as a whole, even within Road A, we'd be somewhere in the 70s for impervious coverage. So it's not a matter of trying to squeeze every last piece of pavement out of this, it's really trying to make sure that these buildings remain functional. And as I was starting to say, with the car parking, it accommodates shift changes, you know, these buildings are often multi-shift operations, and there is some stagger, there might be some overlap of shifts where you may have 300 people in a building, but at, you know, for an hour or 45 minutes, maybe you have 450 people in the parking lot. So making sure that there's no overflow of the parking that happens on public roads, certainly true for trucks, we want to make sure these buildings are, can accommodate all of the user's requirements. So again, that's a driving force in terms of the programming of these buildings. Each building's parking is also designed to really operate independently. We know the redevelopment plan talks about the concept of shared parking, but each one of these buildings will have an independent operation. These are all, of course, the same use, so there's not like you have the benefit of sharing like you might have with a residential in an office that could, you know, people, office people there during the day when the residents are there at night. These kind of uses and this kind of configuration, each building's going to have its own security protocols, it's going to have its own access protocols, there really is not an opportunity to particularly share for each. And again, given where we are in terms of the compliance, and as Steve mentioned, the compliance relative to impervious coverage, the savings we would realize by trying to share, frankly, would only complicate operations, it's not practical for development of this type, particularly a multi-building configuration the way we have it. We do have in one instance, in Building One, we've got a section here on the western end, the southwestern area, we have, this is the only place on the site where we have what we would call dead-end parking. There's parking where you can go in, but there's no way to exit. We've designed that, this area. We've designed it that way, there's, the site is constrained in that location a little bit, there is, this parking will be oriented toward the, vertically toward the finished floor of the building, which is four feet higher than where the truck court is, given the loading docks that are here on the south side of the building. So there is a substantial grade change between them, and furthermore, we wanted to, again, reinforce the opportunity to separate the car traffic and the truck traffic. So there's some physical limitations, and also, we didn't think necessarily the layout would benefit from connecting into this truck driveway. What we had discussed with Mr. Fowler was, we could identify maybe spaces at the end, stripe them out to provide vehicles to turn, an opportunity to turn around more safely. So while we provided a little bit of a turnaround area, we could give them a space to pull into and essentially key-turn out. So we can certainly lose a space or two there, we'll still be compliant, and we'll facilitate that turnaround maneuver that would happen in that, in that one limited area.
Now Kevin, in terms of location of parking spaces, the redevelopment plan doesn't have any limitation on location of parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
But the underlying ordinance does talk about a minimum of five feet from property lines, and also, as a provision, that there shouldn't be parking within the front yard, the required front yard. And I think it's part of the design standards. CME noted that as a waiver. Can you just briefly address why we're proposing parking within the front yard area?
I can. So in each case, we've designed the building to have parking, a distinct front of the building, all oriented toward Road A. The parking itself does lie within the front yard setback, the building setback, so while the building's compliant, the parking is actually in. We've done this to try to create, for a couple of different reasons. We believe it's the appropriate place, again, separation of cars and trucks, as I mentioned before. The offices in the fronts of these buildings will be oriented toward proposed Road A. We want to make sure that we maximize the opportunity for visibility of those offices and for the proximity of those people working in the offices and in the building to have easy access into the building, which again allows for, requires the parking to then be in the front yard. We also, as, while we are in violation technically of that standard, we've left 30 feet between the right-of-way line along Road A and the parking lot line. We've got, as you can see, substantial vegetation within that area. We are complying with the street trees that are required per the redevelopment plan and the underlying ordinance. We also have additional planting set for screening, so we've, we have a really robust streetscape here, and that's what we're trying to create. This is more like an office park frontage than it would be an industrial area, and that's what we've tried to create, a really beautified and enhanced area. And frankly, we don't think with the appropriate screening and the proximity, the way these buildings are going to be treated, as the architect will testify in a few minutes, is that, you know, this is really going to be, this is going to look like an office park. I mean, this is, we're really trying to dress up the front doors of these buildings, and we think that the buildings themselves, oriented in this way with that parking in this way reinforces that. So in terms of the sidewalks, because we do have also, there's a technical waiver that we have relative to provision of sidewalks. As I mentioned before, we are proposing sidewalks along the length of proposed Road A. We have sidewalks within the parking areas in every location where parking is adjacent to a building. And we do have connections between that Road A sidewalk and the parking nets, and the sidewalks that are at each building. At each building has those connections between the regional sidewalk along Road A and the building frontages. Where we do not have sidewalk, and where this waiver is required, is essentially on the outer edge of the parking, and that's true for all buildings. So in the case of Building One, we don't have parking on the north side of the parking spaces, really because anyone who's parked on that north side parking wants to come to the office, wants to enter the building on the south side. You know, we just feel that those parking spaces or that sidewalk would really never be used. This is another nod to, we've got the opportunity for more green space in those areas. We'd be building sidewalk in name only, frankly, it would never be used. We think the site and the design overall is enhanced by just adding more green space in those perimeter areas of the sidewalk, you know, of the parking lots.
Have you considered the need for electric vehicle charging?
We have. We don't have it identified on the plan as of right now, but we are prepared to make each one of these buildings and each one of these sites to be essentially EV-ready. We will put in conduit that accommodates a certain number of chargers. Really, the demand for those chargers is very tenant-dependent. I think we are committed to doing as a baseline, but in terms of specified number, we would want the opportunity to talk about that with individual tenants. But we certainly all recognize that electrical vehicles are coming in, are here to stay, and every building's going to need to accommodate them.
And the conduits will be in place so you can air the stations as needed?
Correct.
Thank you.
One of the other obligations under the redevelopment plan is to ensure that the site has connectivity to public transit. The applicant has engaged New Jersey Transit to evaluate the ability to get either a transit stop located here, a new stop, or to have an existing stop relocated here. The response from Transit has been that they're unwilling to do that as a matter of policy on a speculative basis, that once the building gets closer as construction starts and they can recognize what the demands of this project may be, they'll undertake that study and will make a recommendation. Ultimately, if that, that may be a new transit stop here, the applicant's committed to fulfill their obligations on the redevelopment plan with New Jersey Transit. Just at this point, it's a little bit of unfinished business because we have to wait for Transit to conduct their own study. But this plan, if it were to accommodate it, we believe it would be somewhere near the intersection of Road A and Cheesecake Avenue. There's ample room to be able to do that. We're committed to making pedestrian connections to those areas wherever that transit stop may end up.
Now, moving to stormwater management, I know that you've made several submissions, you've had several levels of review from CME. Do you want to just very briefly review generally how the stormwater management's going to work?
Indeed, and I think the most critical part to identify here is that this plan has not only been reviewed by CME, but it's also been reviewed and approved by NJDEP as part of the, the site, the design that already has obtained a wetlands permit for some disturbances and also flood hazard area individual permits. So the state has already reviewed and approved this design. Just briefly, it's, we have a design that's comprised of five different basins. There are three wet ponds identifying in this dark blue color, one on building, by the Building One lot, one by Building Two, fourth one, or the, what is called Pond Four is the third wet pond over here on east of Building Three. We have an extended detention basin, a dry extended detention basin west of Building Three, and an underground detention basin in the trailer shortage area north of Building Three. So in the cases of Ponds One and Two, they do discharge as in the existing condition towards Sellers Brook. Ponds Three, Four, and Five ultimately discharge towards the Pond Creek Tributary. They comport with the requirements of the NJDP standard for peak flow attenuation and water quality. The site's actually exempt from providing groundwater recharge due to the underlying groundwater contamination, but again, the site conforms in every way in this design, and we've been going through, as Steve mentioned, with CME to get some of the details even further refined on that.
And there is a technical waiver, the ordinance requires that you design all the pipes one size up from what's actually required?
Right.
And can you address why we're seeking to just stay at the level of what's warranted as opposed to going up one additional size?
I can, and that's actually a limited condition for only a portion of the site. So the site's storm source system has been designed generally for the 25-year storm. Any pipes that convey outfalls from the basins are designed to, for the 100-year storm. And in fact, we've evaluated the entire system to convey the 100-year storm to ensure that there's no runoff, which could essentially escape the site by some other overland relief. All of the, all of the contributing drainage area that goes to these ponds that's been evaluated for 100-year storm, in fact, does get there. As you mentioned, Steve, the ordinance requires us to upsize pipes from whatever their sort of baseline design is to one standard size. That's done to accommodate for potential over time loss of capacity, maybe due to accumulate sediment in the system and things like that. We are seeking a waiver for any of the pipe sizes that are designed over 24 inches. So the ones that are 15, 18, and 24, we will comply with that. For anything that's over 24, there becomes a practical limitation about how big the pipes can be, the, it creates conflicts with other crossing pipe, other crossing utilities, and some places would create cover problems and other things. It just becomes impractical for the larger pipes that would be, say, 30 or 36-inch, or in some cases, 48-inch to upsize those as well. So against a limited condition, I think we have met the overall intent of the ordinance and in the spirit of the ordinance, if not a meeting it exactly.
And I'd like you to briefly review the utilities.
So this site will be, of course, provided with new utilities for water, sewer, gas, electric, telecom. It's important to note that as part of the redevelopment plan, there are obligations for this project and due to Section 1 to extend the water main. Today, the water, the existing water mains on Cheesecake Road down by the A.H. Harris Building, we will be extending that north up to our site and through the length of Road A, and ultimately, all three buildings will be connected off that extended service. As a secondary requirement, what we are going to do so that this is not just an extension of a dead-end system, we, that's a 16-inch line that we are extending along Cheesecake Road as specified by the redevelopment plan. We are also making a more limited 8-inch connection to Menaceink Avenue so that this is a looped system and we minimize the dead-end length. But again, those are all public water mains that will be dedicated ultimately to the borough. And again, traveling within the public rights of way in Road A, and in the case of where it goes onto the Building Three lot, we will dedicate an easement for maintenance of that line to the borough as well. For sanitary sewer, we are, there is an existing interceptor line that runs just north of the site, and flow comes from essentially in the direction of the DuPont facility towards South River. We did a study of the capacity of that line and found that the 20,000 or so gallons per day of sewer demand that's generated by these three buildings is, there's far excess capacity available within an existing line. We actually metered that existing line for a period of several weeks, evaluated it from a capacity standpoint, and there were multiples of this project available within that line. So there's no capacity shortfall in that case. As I mentioned, it's a little over, nearly 21,000 gallons a day sewer demand for this project. The water is a little over 22,000 gallons per day demand. In both cases, we will need DEP permits for those extensions. And in terms of gas, electric, and telecom, I think those will be extended conventionally. I think it is important to note, however, there is a gas main that runs from South Menaceink into the plant. We are coordinating with PSENG and the Ashland folks to ensure that that gets relocated in a manner that ensures that the plant stays up and running, and would also provide an extension opportunity for, to serve the three buildings.
Moving along to landscaping.
So as you can see from this exhibit, the site's proposed to be very liberally landscaped. We are meeting the plan's obligations relative to street trees along the proposed roadways, 50-foot on center. We've got additional requirements for buffer areas, parking areas, and things like that, which we are meeting, the plan complies with those requirements. We have some over 950 trees proposed as part of this site and thousands of shrubs. What's important, of course, the borough also has true replacement obligations, so much of this site today is wooded and will be cleared as part of the development of this site. And in fact, the applicant has an obligation to replace 7,171 trees as part of this, and we'll be making a payment to the Borough's Tree Bank Fund to fulfill that obligation.
Briefly, cover lighting? Just explain what we're proposing in terms of building-mounted and pole-mounted lighting?
So we are proposing both pole-mounted and building-mounted lights. The pole-mounted lights are LEDs that are set at 35-foot mounting height, that's in compliance with the redevelopment plan. The building-mounted lights are 25-foot mounting height typical. There will be the roadway, the roadway lighting along proposed Road A that'll be utilizing the JCPN L standard. So again, we're fully compliant with that, with the exception of one area, and it has to do with the light that we have at the southernmost area of this common access road that happens to be on Lot Two, but also is, provides the access drive to the plant, to the existing Ashland plant. So while your ordinance requires a maximum .5-foot candles at any property line, we will actually exceed that, we'll be .7. But again, it's an area, it's a pretty critical area for safety, we want to make sure it's adequately lit, and we feel like that based off of the limits that we have, we have, there is a formal subdivision line there, but in the way that the buildings are configured and the site access is going to be configured, it's essentially almost like a continuous onsite intersection. We want to make sure it's consistently lit, and we're not trying to create a dark spot between their property and our property.
So it's, and it's purely internal to the overall Hercules site? It has no impact on any adjoining properties, correct?
None whatsoever.
Thank you. Briefly, I know there were some questions about solid waste management, how that's going to be handled?
Right, the, each building is provided with an external trash enclosure, there's one for each building. That's, it was an obligation that Sarah imposed or identified that they wanted to see, and we added it at that time. Each one, each enclosure is a fully enclosed, three-sided, enclosed with masonry. That masonry enclosure is screened with vegetation as well. They're relatively small on the site exhibit, they're all located on the backside of the building, adjacent to truck courts, pointing to all three, so they're appropriately located. One of the things that we've identified, and it's consistent for buildings of this type and of this size, is that generally, these buildings don't actually generate a lot of waste, particularly garbage. What is sort of an open question is how much recyclable cardboard they may generate. Based off of, we have some pretty generous sized trash enclosures, although they're small on the plan, they're 20-foot, 23-foot wide, there's multiple bins that could be fit within the enclosure. So we think it's adequate based on a speculative basis, but until a tenant's identified, we'd have to evaluate those needs for if they in fact had an additional burden for additional recyclables. But certainly for the garbage waste stream, we feel they're more than adequate. Each one of these buildings will be serviced by private hauler, there'll be no obligation for the borough's system to pick them up. So it's all going to be a private situation, it'll be managed, and oftentimes, they get, you know, daily pickups.
In terms of signage, the freestanding and the facade signs are all designed to comply with the redevelopment plan requirements?
They are. Each building is proposed to have one freestanding monument sign placed at a driveway. The ordinance, or the redevelopment plan allows 100 square feet. We've actually shown up to 100 square feet. The design detail that's actually submitted as part of the plan, as designed by KSS, the architect, actually has a 56-foot sign face, so we're well within compliance. And again, it's a freestanding sign oriented towards a driveway that's in front of each building. Similarly, there's a tenement monument sign, I'm sorry, a tenant facade sign, that'll be one per building, 100 square feet each, again, complies with the redevelopment plan, put at prominent corners over where the primary entries will be.
Now, in terms of outside agency approvals, I know you went through DEP. What else do we need, and where are we in the process?
So of course, the project requires Millsix County Planning Board approval for both the site plan and the subdivision, that application is pending. The borough, of course, does their own soil laws and sediment control review, so that's being done as part of this site plan application. We will ultimately, after we get that soil laws and sediment control approval- control approval from the borough, have to seek a GPT's permit from the state for construction activity stormwater discharges. As I mentioned before, we will have water and sewer main extensions that are required by DEP as part of that for the sewer. Millsix County Utilities Authority will have to provide endorsement on that application. We have already obtained our wetlands and flood hazard area permits for this site. I don't know if I missed any.
I think you got them all.
And there's some perfunctory borough approvals for soil movement and tree removal, as we talked about before.
So what I'd like you to do now is, I know you alluded to it earlier, the intersection improvements. At the intersection of the new proposed road and Cheesquack.
So I've put up Exhibit A6, intersection geometry exhibit prepared by Lang and dated July 21. This is, we've got a side-by-side condition. What's shown on the left is the interim roadway geometry that was reflected on the prior Exhibit A4. What's shown on the right hand is what the final intersection geometry will be once the Section 3 roadway gets built and there's a full extension out to Hardle Street. There's two components to this, so let me highlight on the interim condition first. As I mentioned before, Road A will end up in essentially what is a stop-controlled T-intersection at Cheesquack. One of the other obligations we have as part of Section 1 is also to modify the existing Cheesquack-Menasink intersection, which for northbound travelers on Cheesquack, they actually have a stop. And what the redevelopment plan contemplates is that that stop movement will be removed. We'll have to essentially soften the curve of the roadway, but it would be a continuous through movement. We would eliminate that stop sign. That will be done as part of Section 1. We are evaluating the scope of the improvements. We're actually working with DuPont because it appears that there may need to be some sort of right-of-way dedication or right-of-way easement that needs to be acquired as part of that. We are working with the DuPont folks to solve that issue, but we understand that those improvements are in fact an obligation of this application under Section 1. Although it's highlighted on Section 3, we really just wanted you to show that that same intersection's going to remain without further changes as part of the Section 3 improvements. So in the final intersection geometry, we have actually submitted plans for the board's review and for review by professionals of what the entire Cheesquack frontage would be in this intersection design. So they've been already submitted as part of this application. This is just not a speculative nature. This design has been reviewed. This is consistent. This intersection configuration was also discussed with Sarah at that time. And again, it's recognized that this is the design that is the borough's preference for the ultimate arrangement for this intersection. So what will happen is vehicles traveling north on Cheesquack will be directed into what will be Road A as a continuous movement. There will be no stops there. What will happen is, this is the way we're going to effectuate ensuring that trucks leaving this development, not only Section 1 but also Section 3, cannot turn left and head north towards Menasink Avenue and Washington Road, as there will be a no truck turns, basically no left turn for trucks. Only passenger cars will be able to make that turn. We have a channelized right for those vehicles who are continuing on Cheesquack Road and don't have to make this sort of right-hand, right-angle intersection. So what we have is, again, it's a configuration that's oriented to ensure that this connection, this Washington Road bypass makes a more efficient connection into Cheesquack Avenue and prevents the unwanted truck trips going north and between Washington Avenue and what this proposed Road A would be. So again, this is the configuration. It's fully designed. It will be, if, to me, the board's action, if they were to approve our application, really cements this alignment and this obligation as well, but this will not be constructed essentially until there's a road connected through to Hardle Street. Until there's a way for this to not be a dead end, it will remain in this configuration of a common T-intersection, and Cheesquack Road will follow its current alignment.
I don't have any further questions of the witness at this point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mike?
I'd just like to have Jay address the issue of the waiver of the pipes.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Tripp indicated, this application has been discussed back and forth between the applicant's office and our office for months. The waivers that he's asking for, we have no objection with. We've reviewed that with him typically, and I think actually, the original waiver was all pipe sizes, and after discussion, they agreed that they'd request a waiver just on the larger sizes. And the board has approved that type of waiver in the past on other applications. Same thing with some of the other waivers, the front yard setback parking, the waiver for sidewalks around the building. So the waivers being requested are consistent with other waivers that have been approved by the board, and we have no problems with those.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, just one other comment to the applicant's engineer. There were other technical comments in our report. Just get on the record that I believe you are going to go through and take care of those. If the board acts favorably, all the other outstanding items, with the exception of the waivers, you'll be able to resolve.
That's correct, and that's true of any comments in your letter and also Mr. Fowler's letter.
Thank you.
Call the architect now, Ed Klimak, go over just a little bit about the architecture so you can see what these buildings will look like.
It's the first three or four, I'm sorry. Is this there like medium? It's either, it's like blowing right on me.
Cool.
Want my jacket back?
No.
It's blowing right on us, like, I'm shivering.
If you could please state your name for the record and spell it?
Certainly. My name is Edmund, E-D-M-U-N-D, Klimak, K-L-I-M-E-K. I'm a partner at KSS Architects.
Could you please provide, oh, actually, sorry. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Certainly. Architect registered in the state of New Jersey, been registered for the past 30 years. I've appeared in many planning boards throughout the state, and we are known for expertise in the design of industrial architecture.
Does the board accept?
Also have a Bachelor's of Architecture from the University of Detroit, graduated in 1986.
Does the board accept his credentials? Need a motion.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, Ed, can you discuss what you just marked as Exhibit A7?
Yeah, I will. And this is a perspective view of actually, as we come into the site and right off of Cheesquack, it'll really give you an indication of the building and what it appears like. I do have regular elevations to show you as well, but this is probably the most thing that you'll see as a person who enters the site. I think Kevin said earlier that this is designed as the aesthetic of an office park. That was the direction that we were given. So first, before I get into really how the architecture works, I'll give you some of the real basics. So the first thing is that these buildings are being designed in conformance of the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code. They're being designed in full compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Primary materials that are being used on the building are concrete panels, exposed steel, and curtain wall glass. So really, what the architecture was about, again, was to take on a much higher quality than I think what many people see in warehouses throughout the state. And that's been consistent with our work with Trammell-Crow throughout. What we really try to do in these buildings is to try to give you an idea of quality, an idea of scale, and consistency. So what are you seeing? Rather than just simple entrances, we've made them dramatic. We've done things like peeled back the concrete panels so that you can begin to see an exposed steel structure. We have large curtain walls of glass that really highlight the entrances to all of the buildings. And this is a language that's being used consistently on all of the buildings. So all of the major entrances work pretty much like this. They set back, they're filled with glass, they use exposed steel, they use painted concrete. And the intention here is to really create areas of focus. So this is Building 1 that you begin to see here. You see the other buildings that happen in the distance that use the exact same language. Also, what you begin to see is that we use color to break down the scale. So as it happens along Road A, and again, all the trucks are behind the building, we break it up so that you see different areas of color. We use, first, to very punch out the front entrance itself. You see these bold areas of color and exposed steel. In the long extent, we tone down the color and add in other panels that also break it down in terms of scale. And then again, this is used on all buildings and on both sides. What we have here is a consistent use of a higher caliber of architecture and design as it's used in this park to give a sense of consistency and cohesion to the overall park. So all the buildings are designed in exactly the same way. I'll show you a brief elevation that describes that.
Mark that.
Thank you. So again, these are the orthogonal elevations. What you see here is the facade that faces Road A.
Before you continue, can you identify the?
Sure.
A?
Sure. This is A8, and it is overall elevations Building 1.
What date is it?
Pardon me, the date is 7/21/21.
Thank you.
So again, Building 1 north is the facade that faces Road A, the public side of it. Here, now you see the major building entrance, just as I showed you, in the perspective, large expanse of glass, large expanse of glass again on the other side that forms the other entrance. Again, these are really highlighted so that they become your areas of focus. Then the main facade itself muted in terms of its color, but then we introduce panels that also have glass clear stories in them to provide daylight on the inside, but also just break down the scale of the architecture itself. We've also introduced larger areas of glass into where are really the occupied spaces within the warehouse to benefit the occupants. So all the buildings are designed in exactly the same way.
I don't have anything else from the architect. Are there any questions?
Questions from the board?
I do. How tall are these buildings?
They're 55 feet from the finished floor to the top of the roof. That's very consistent with the type of use that you need.
Any green building elements?
Sure. At this time, we are not designing them to lead standards. However, the things that we do incorporate in them, for example, are the daylight components that we bring in. So for example, the daylighting that we're providing for, what's called a lay-down space, it really works to illuminate that entire space. We've also, you can begin to see them in the back here. Again, they're not seen, but the purpose of them is to bring daylight into the space. One of the most effective things that you can do in a distribution center, it actually offsets the lighting. Many times, the tenants will bring in daylight-controlled fixtures, taking into account the daylight. So as a developer, we want to try to bring in as much daylight as possible. Most important impact that we can have.
How about large, flat roofs and consideration solar panels on the roofs?
So at this stage, we don't have them designed for solar panels. We install them, and users have, end users have come in to do that later.
Roof design would not in any way prohibit that.
At this point, they're not designed to deal with the additional loading that's associated with them, but no, otherwise, there's nothing that would prohibit that. That's correct.
If you could, please state and spell your name for the record.
Alan Lothian, A-L-A-N-L-O-T-H-I-A-N.
Do you swear affirm? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering from Rutgers, a Master's of Science in Transportation from NJIT. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, and I've testified before doctors throughout the state.
And you practice, how long have you been practicing in the field of traffic engineering?
Over 23 years.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept his credentials. Thank you, Mike. Now, a second?
Second. All in favor? opposed?
Thank you.
Alan, you prepared the traffic impact study that was submitted as part of this application?
Yes, I did.
And can you just briefly summarize what you did and what your findings were as reflected in that report?
Okay. I am not going to reiterate some of the things that Mr. Webb has already identified with respect to access, with respect to the size of the building, but I will go through some of the details in the traffic impact study. We conservatively estimated the trip generation based on standard traffic engineering practices using Land Use Code 150, which is standard warehousing, in the trip generation manual put out by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And based on that, the trip generation for the weekday morning peak hour and weekday evening peak hour really equates to one additional vehicle per minute in any given direction on both Borden Town and Washington. And it equates to approximately one additional truck trip every three to four minutes on average in any one direction along Borden Town, based on the circulation patterns that Mr. Webb has identified. We looked at the morning peak hour, which was 7:15 to 8:15 a.m., and the afternoon-evening peak hour, which was 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. The counts that we conducted were in November of 2019, pre-pandemic, when schools were in session. We did not take a credit for the existing industrial, former industrial development. We looked at just the proposed warehouses on the surrounding roadway network as, you know, essentially as green. And what we found when we distributed the traffic on the surrounding roadway network that with minor signal timing adjustments at the intersections of Borden Town Avenue and Cheesquack Road and Washington Road and Menasink Ave, and a few physical improvements down at the intersection of Borden Town Ave and Cheesquack Road, that the intersections will operate with no significant impact. And the recommended physical improvements are really to facilitate the additional truck turning movements down at the intersection of Borden Town and Cheesquack Road. The off-site improvements are under the jurisdiction of Millsix County, and they are currently under review, and we're working with them to determine what they will require for the ultimate build-out of those improvements. The idea is that we are providing an efficient access for the proposed industrial development to the surrounding roadway network. And the site itself and the access and the internal components have been designed to accommodate all design vehicles, including passenger cars, trucks, emergency vehicles. And really, we're just working within what was proposed and approved as part of the redevelopment plan.
If the board has any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Alan Lothian.
Alan, this information that you're referring to, when was that published?
Which information?
Well, you said you're referring to information of like standard information.
Of the IT, the IT information?
Edition 10, IT. Yeah, IT version 10, 10th edition.
Published when?
Published, I believe- Published, I believe, 2017, 2017, 2018.
You know if that's before electronic logging devices were required by trucking companies?
I do not.
And what's the range of error in your estimations?
Well, the trip generation that we conducted is on the higher end. We use the higher rates for the land use code. And we applied that to the street peak hours. I mean, it's based on a wide variety of, the rate is based on a wide variety of warehouse uses. It's an understood standard throughout the industry.
So would you say your numbers were conservative on the conservative side, assuming higher than they might be?
They're conservative based on this particular land use, yes.
The reason I'm asking is, I am the vice president of a trucking and warehouse company. And when we go out to get a warehouse or when we start to lease space, there's no way we can tell how much traffic's going to be generated without knowing who the tenant is, or whether it's going to be used for storage, or cross stocking, or anything like that. I just don't know how you could come up with an accurate number or close to an accurate number without knowing who your tenant is. And that's why I'm asking what your range of error could be based on what the tenants could be.
So we're looking at what typically occurs during the street peak hours. And there is a wide, you're right, there is a wide variety of different warehouse users, but what this land use looks at is that wide variety. So there's some flexibility. It's plus or minus, say 10%, but if, you know, if there is a more intensive user, more intensive tenant that comes to the site, then likely we would have to come back before the board if there's a significant--
Well, not necessarily, but you would, the design, the design is designed to accommodate the use that's proposed, correct?
Yeah, it's designed to accommodate a wide variety of warehouse users.
Your attorney's correct, you wouldn't have to come back to the board.
Apologize.
Could you give us some examples of who possible applicants may be for the warehouses?
I think I would defer to, I would defer to the representative from the applicant for that, because he's the person who's been talking to prospective tenants and knows the market. So I can have him sworn in next and he can explain. Sure.
One more question. The peak hours that you're referring to, where did that come from? From what I understand, or from what I see in the business that I'm in, you can't have all the trucks coming in at once. You can't have all trucks leaving at once. I mean, they're staggered as they come in. So in my particular warehouse, a few hundred thousand square feet, I can't have 10 trucks come in within 30 minutes and get worked on. And then there's a lull, especially with the new hours of service that were mandated by the federal government. You know, truck drivers are now limited to the amount of hours they can work. So you can't have truck drivers sitting around or idling, waiting to get loaded or unloaded, because if they run out of hours, they have to shut off and they're done for the day. And that's the reason why I asked how old this publication is, if it's before the federally mandated hours of service laws went into effect.
All right. So again, what we looked at was conservative numbers, and especially with the trucking numbers, we looked at a conservative amount. We looked at 20% of the overall trip generation during the street peak hours as truck trips. Really, what happens is there is a wide, you know, the activity occurs all throughout the day. There's interaction between the trucks, the shift changes throughout the day. What we looked at was the street peak hours. So we went out there and did counts on the roadways during the AM and the PM street peak hours, when the volume on the roadways is the highest. And then we applied the trip generation for the facility on top of those street peak hours.
So when you talk about peak, you're talking about the existing peak on the surrounding streets?
Yes, the peak commuter hours on the roadways themselves.
And then using the IT numbers, you're estimating what traffic would be added to that, correct?
What traffic as a result of--
You're not the expert here. Let your expert answer the question, all right? And let's not lead him. You're counting cars? Is that what the peak is? Is that your traffic?
Yes, we conducted, we conducted counts in November of 2019 to identify the weekday morning AM and PM peak hours.
Of cars, of traffic?
Of car, all vehicles on--
Well, not necessarily all trucks.
No, we counted cars, trucks, and buses.
That's all traffic?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
I have a question. Earlier, you mentioned about potential modifications that needed to be done, the cross-section of Menasink and Washington. Can you elaborate on what those modifications might look like?
So at Menasink and Washington, we're only looking at a shift of two seconds of time from one phase to another. The, I think what you're referring to is the intersection of Borden Town and Cheesequake, and that is extending the left turn lanes, pulling some of the stop bars back, and some minimal widening on the Cheesequake approach, the eastbound Cheesequake approach, to facilitate those truck movements that we anticipate.
I have a question. When you go through what kind of tenants would occupy these buildings, can you let us know what kind of traffic would be generated by those tenants?
Again, what we base our analysis off of is a general estimate based on a whole bunch of different type of warehouse uses. And again, that's the standard that's used in all of traffic engineering, not for any one specific tenant. So what we're showing in our traffic impact study is generally what is anticipated to occur during the street peak hours.
Not knowing who the tenant is going to be?
Yes.
Makes it very difficult.
Because it's speculative nature.
I have a question. With the increase in traffic you see, with the trucks especially coming in the area, is it required to analyze any of the surrounding roadways to see if there's any near future maintenance issues with additional truck traffic, additional weight on these roadways?
We evaluated, we evaluated the stretch of Cheesequake and, you know, there's no noticeable deterioration as of now.
Do we have a projection on what we--
I think--
--would be a service life of these roads with increased truck traffic?
I do not have that answer.
Anyone else have anything? Trip?
I don't have anything further of this witness at this point.
Will you next, Miss, please?
Okay, Keenan. Yeah, let's put--
Please state and spell your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Mealy. M. like Michael, E. L. E. And I'm managing director with the Trammell Crow Company.
And the applicant is a Trammell Crow Company, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And you've been involved in this project since the beginning?
I have, yes.
And your responsibilities on this particular project, just so the board understands?
Sure. On this particular project, I'd say that I have oversight over all aspects. That would be the ultimate design, the leadership of this consultant team that you've met tonight, as well as ultimately the financing and construction and leasing and marketing of the project once we construct it.
And there were questions about the type of tenants that you anticipate. Can you, obviously, the buildings are, you don't have tenants currently, but you have an idea as to what type of tenants you're looking for and that might be likely to come to the site?
Sure. Well, I'll back up just a second, and I recognize that this is, this is the question. This is a question that we experience every time we pursue a new project. And it very much is a chicken and the egg situation, is that we can't really attract tenants until we have an approved site, because tenants aren't interested with the uncertainty of an unapproved site. But most boards have concerns not knowing who's ultimately going to occupy the building. So in situations like this one, you know, what we have done, Trammell Crow Company, is we design these buildings to attract specific kinds of tenants. And those tenants tend to be those that are name brands, Fortune 50 companies that you would have heard of. And the design of these would not necessarily be, would not necessarily attract high-velocity freight types of users. And that's very much by design. You know, when people think of large warehouses, many drive up and down the New Jersey Turnpike and see those monstrous million-square-foot buildings off to the left and right, occupied by all sorts of companies, loading on both sides, hundreds of dock doors in either direction that you can see going up and down the building. That's not what this is. While the total project is a million feet, it's in three buildings. Each building might be divided and have multiple tenants in it, and you have loading on one side of the building. So the throughput on a single-sided load building is just not what we see in a cross-dock type of facility that you would see in other places. And then, as we've talked about earlier, the finishes are geared towards higher finish tenants, and that's why we also baked in more car parking, is because we're trying to attract tenants. You know, we've thrown around the warehouse distribution label on these, but we really think of, you know, we really internally call these flexible industrial buildings. There will clearly be a warehouse component to them, but we, in projects that we've done this before, we have light manufacturing, we have assembly, we have clean rooms, we have conditioned space, we have office space, sometimes 20, 30,000 square feet of office space. We did a project very much like this one in Piscataway, New Jersey a few years back, and it was two buildings, a 300 and a 200. And the feature building, the building up front was about 300,000 square feet, and we leased it to a company called SHI. I don't know if anyone's familiar with them. One of the largest privately-owned MBE businesses in the country. And what they did in that space is fully air-conditioned, and they're a reseller of computers. So if anybody works at a large company and they buy 200 computers for employees, those computers go from Dell and they go to the SHI facility. And in that facility, they, there's individuals in there configuring all 200 computers, putting the right company software, the right company screensavers, you know, tailoring the computers for their employees. And then those laptops sit in there for a day or two, and then they go out to the end user. So those are the kinds of uses that we see in these buildings. You know, again, and then, you know, the other part we were talking about, well, is it going to be a lot of tenant that generates a lot of traffic, a tenant that generates a little bit of traffic. If we were building one million-square-foot building, you obviously run the risk that you lease it to the one tenant that's got a lot of traffic. When it's three buildings and potentially six tenants, possibly, you know, between three and six tenants, let's say, you know, we tend to think the averages work out. And the averages that our traffic engineers talked about tends to be what happens. You have some that have a little higher ratios, some have a little bit lower, but you're going to fall in that, in that range. So I don't want to get too far into the technical parts of traffic. I'm certainly not an engineer, but I've, Trammell Crow Companies built about 20 million square feet of these kinds of buildings over the past decade, and we've seen a lot of tenants, we've leased a lot of that space, and, you know, we're familiar with how it kind of goes on the lease-up efforts.
Question regarding the types of tenants, you spoke about, you know, potentially trying to attract Fortune 50 companies and whatnot. Regarding the type of tenants that you are, you're looking to attract here, a lot of the Fortune 50 companies have sustainability environmental policies, and you would think that they would be interested in occupying space that is LEED compliant and has opportunities for renewable energy.
Right.
Have you considered maybe rethinking some of the design and pursuing LEED certification and allowing the building to accommodate the load for solar panels and other renewable energy opportunities?
Well, I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't say that we're not considering it. What I'd say is that, you know, we've pursued LEED buildings in the past. I think, you know, if this makes the paper, people in my company will maybe not be so happy to hear this, but, you know, the LEED has, in some ways, become a little bit of a certificate-chasing type of thing, you know, adding up points and going for just the certification as opposed to real sustainable efforts, which in our view really comes down to the tenant, because they're operating the building. We're certainly, you know, using recycled material as best we can, local material as much as we can. But when we talk about solar panels, you know, the tenant has to decide whether they want that on their building. And we've leased multiple buildings, some to some e-commerce companies that you might know, and they've added, you know, we've together added solar panels, hydrogen fueling stations, we talked about electric chargers. So all of that is completely on the table, and we will pivot to it. It's just a question of who the tenant is and what they want in the building.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
One of the same lines. On the, I understand that you want to provide solar panels less than wanted, but if the roof itself is constructed to handle loads, the solar panels are still with, then how can they provide in a certain way? Or I think in today's day, the new building would be constructed with the ability to handle loads of solar panels. A lot of things like that, the snow loads that we have, that you would add the extra span support that you could put solar panels in the building. How do you do it after the fact?
Well-- Yeah, I mean, I rely on my engineer, but we have, in fact, beefed up our roofs on more than one occasion to accommodate solar panels after the fact. So, you know, we're basically just adding steel to the joists and, but it's done, you know, in the process of the solar panel installation.
I'd like to have Mr. Gleemack address that as well, just in terms of the adaptability of what you're proposing.
Sure. They're very adaptable roofs to accommodate the loads that would be required for solar panels, and we've done it quite often. A couple of things. First is because of the way that we design the roofs, we often bake in a lot of extra loading to deal with, for example, additional insurance requirements of things like uplift and things like that. And when you look at that and add the additional load for photovoltaics, you can design it so that it offsets that, so it doesn't preclude it at all. And moreover, and we've done this as well, when we need to reinforce structure because of the type of structure we'll bring here, it's a relatively straightforward means by which to reinforce the steel. So there's nothing that we're doing that's precluding the use of photovoltaics. It's just it doesn't make sense to bake it in yet until we know the requirements of the tenant. My, I'm actually the author of how to do LEED for distribution centers and worked with the U.S. Green Building Council in doing it. We do a lot of, part of our base design is a lot of the features that you see already baked into the building, like I talked about. Daylight, the amount of recycled material, as an example, are already baked into it. We don't necessarily obtain the LEED rating until we work with the tenant. It leads to the most effective results in the end of the day. So nothing we are doing here will preclude that at all.
And then just circling back to the, talking about electric vehicles, or even if, I know you consider a running conduit would be available, but it's conduit of ground, and it must, I know it's there, it's not something you can see. Even if 1% of the cars today on the road are electric vehicles, 1% of all your parking spaces are charging stations, maybe free spaces for a building that's available, that they know it's there, they can always have it later on, it's not, it's getting pretty light load carried.
Yeah, I mean, we're certainly not against it for sure, and we could do it. Again, when Again, when we're building these on a shell basis, we want to be as flexible as we can. I mean, yeah, they're not going to see the conduit, but whenever we start talking to a tenant about leasing the building, we have extensive conversations about what we're going to be doing to the building, how much office we're going to be putting in the building, where the bathrooms go, what's happening. So that would be a part of any discussion. But in terms of, you know, putting some in on a speculative basis, I mean, we're certainly not against that at all.
Again, 1% is like three spaces per building, and at least it's a star.
Yeah.
They're there, the pocket, maybe they would have.
Just to be clear, what you're saying is you're going to, your plan is to retrofit the building? I know you didn't use that word, but you're retrofitting depending on the requirements of the tenant?
You mean on the interior of the building?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's one way to say it is retrofit. You're really finishing the building. When we deliver the building, it's basically four walls and a roof. And then when, and we've got plumbing lines running under the slab inside, we've got water lines above. And so once we have a tenant, they say, we're going to need 20,000 square feet of office in this building, and we want it here. So now we, now we design, Ed's group will design what that office is going to look at, look like. And, yeah, we go about saw cutting into the slab and plugging into that sewer line and bringing the water in. So, you know, retrofit's a way to say it, or finishing it out, yeah. And I do want to point out another thing that is unique for this project, for us, is that we've negotiated a project labor agreement with the Middlesex Building and Trade Council. And so this project is going to be 100% union, which is unique for a private project. And we're really excited about working with the Middlesex trades on those projects as well.
One final question. Can you give us, if you're permitted to, an idea of tenants that you have been able to attract using the type of facility that's similar to what we're proposing here?
Yeah, well, the one that's most similar is the one I described in Piscataway, New Jersey, which was SHI, which is a computer company. Second company, it was, we leased two buildings to three tenants. SHI was the lead, a company called Dawn Foods, who supplies Panera Bread Company with all the baking supplies that they use in their, you know, daily work. And then the third company is a subsidiary of Dawn and Brad Street, and all they do in there is print utility bills. So, three cars a day and three trucks a week. I mean, so that's a good example. So that company shares a building with Dawn Foods. Dawn Foods, trucks are out in the morning, you talk about peak hours, they're out early because they're going to Panera. And their neighbor next door, virtually no trucks. So that's kind of what we see in these buildings. Another, I guess the other closest building would be a 400,000-square-foot building that we do, we built in East Windsor, New Jersey. And we leased that 100% to LG. And it's all washers and dryers that come from the port. And that's not a super-fast-moving product, as you imagine, not a ton of washers and dryers sold every day. So very little traffic at all in that facility. But again, that's the way that one worked out.
Sorry, one last one. Any experience with colocation clients, mission critical?
I'm sorry?
Any experience with colocation clients, mission critical?
No, not actually signing a lease. They, we will talk to those folks from time to time, but we have not actually done a lease in that way.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct something on the record, and I didn't want to misspeak until I knew this for sure, but we did upsize the structure to accommodate photovoltaics. So it's already baked into the structure.
Thank you, John. I thought we did, and I didn't want to say anything wrong.
All the parking and stuff that you have for the cars that list there, you could always put the canopy up and do solar, if you wanted to, or the tenant wanted to do it that way, too, so.
Yes, we've seen that. We haven't done them on these. You know, New Jersey is a, you know, the state that has got some of the best incentives. Again, where we've typically fallen down on this in the past is that, at the end of the day, the tenant has to agree to use that power. And it's just really tough in this stage to make that 25-year commitment without knowing who your tenant's going to be and whether that's a non-starter for them or not. But all great ideas.
Does any of the project budget allotted to any MWVE vendors or subcontractors?
Well, we're not there yet, and that'll be part of the project labor agreement and the work that we're doing with the Middlesex Building and Trades Council. But we're not to that point yet. You know, after approvals is when we start working on, you know, that sort of thing.
I have a question. If early on you decide to go with an office, would this ever become a multi-level building?
It would almost certainly not be, well, I mean, there's a couple configurations that could occur. An office, the entire building being a multi-level office will almost certainly not happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. You might have a, say, a 10,000-square-foot footprint that's two levels, so it's 20,000 square feet of office on two levels inside a 300,000-square-foot building, let's say. That's one possibility. And then another possibility is that there are, you know, some distribution types of uses that use mezzanines inside the space. Usually, again, not typically across the entire building, but in certain portions. And those mezzanines tend to be mechanized and, you know, with conveying and not having, you know, people on all those levels necessarily.
How many jobs do you anticipate this project bring?
Another tough one. Again, it really depends on the tenant, but, you know, what would be typical, I think, here, and we've, as we've been thinking about it, you know, 500 jobs, we're talking now the permanent jobs, not the construction jobs, but 500 seems to be about a good estimate. Again, I would say that some tenants, that ratio would be higher, some is going to be lower, but I think that's a good middle-of-the-fareway bet on buildings like this. You know, the parking, you know, one of the reasons that we did the parking the way we did is we want to attract companies with higher employee counts. You know, not every community feels the same way. We look at it as every parking spot is a job and a person's livelihood. Some places, they're like, nah, we don't care about the jobs, it's too much traffic. But we just want to have the flexibility, want to have the opportunity to, you know, to attract companies with higher job counts, which also, you know, tend to, it's not one-to-one, but generally speaking, you know, the higher employee count, oftentimes, the lower the truck traffic. It usually works in that way, not always, but because if there's more employees, there's usually more office space, there's more assembly space, it's not high-velocity distribution.
How long do you think construction would take on the building?
We are estimating that, you know, if all went according to plan or how we hope, we would break ground in the springtime. And this would take a while because of the nature of the site and what's on there now and, you know, the sensitive nature of it. So I would anticipate an 18-month schedule. And, you know, adding six months from now, so I'd say you're talking about two years for fully complete buildings.
With recent building material shortages, is any conceivable issues right now?
It's brutal. I mean, shortages, no. Pricing is been a bear. So we're holding our breath. I mean, we've baked in the run-up in costs that have occurred over the past three or four months. You know, if there's additional heavy-duty costs, that obviously will hurt, but we're committed, the project's not going to stop us. In terms of shortages, we haven't, you know, we've got right now seven projects under construction in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and New York. And we've had delays, but not to the point of having to suspend projects or whatever, just, you know, you thought you were getting it in May and you're getting it in July, kind of thing. So it does hurt on costs, because now you've got some trades that aren't there when they anticipate it being there, because the product's not there. But overall, it's manageable.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I'm going to call our planner now, just to briefly address the statutory criteria for the relief we're seeking.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Please state your name and record, spell your name for the record.
It's Keenan Hughes, H-U-G-H-E-S.
Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Yes, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm a principal of Phillips Price, which is a planning firm based in Hoboken. I work with municipalities and private clients throughout New Jersey on planning and zoning matters.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation and a motion that we accept as credentials.
Thank you. Mike, can I have a second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, Keenan, can you tell me what I, what we asked you to do?
You asked me, as a planner, to evaluate the relief that we're seeking in accordance with the statutory criteria in the municipal land use law.
And I would direct your attention first to the lot depth that the engineer explained.
Yeah, so Mr. Webb provided a very thorough description of this situation, which I believe can be justified on a C2 basis. And so the purpose of the subdivision is, of course, to create development lots that further the purpose of the redevelopment plan. This lot depth variance just relates to what Mr. Webb described, and I agree, is really just a paper lot, a paper condition. It's a remainder lot, which is adjacent to the three proposed development lots. It's also owned by Hercules. And any further development that would involve that particular lot would require some reconfiguration of it. So it's really both paper in nature, but also temporary condition in terms of any future redevelopment of the property itself. It's also, in my opinion, a de minimis deviation, because the depth is about 97% of what's required. And so, in my opinion, granting this relief would further the purposes of the redevelopment plan inasmuch as it's integral to creating the three development lots that will facilitate this proposed project in the entirety of Section 1, in a manner that's fully conforming with the requirements of the redevelopment plan. And there's really no detrimental impacts here. Again, is the deviation is minimal, it only exists on paper, and it's essentially a temporary condition. So the benefits substantially outweigh any detriments, and therefore, this variance can satisfy the C2 criteria. And then there were several design waivers that were also being requested. Now, each of these are actually from standards in the underlying land development ordinance, not from the redevelopment plan itself. The first of those is the parking within the front yard setback. Again, this is not specifically required in the redevelopment plan. It's a very common condition, in my experience, for warehouse buildings, particularly where we have some office component within the front portion of the building. Very difficult to completely get the parking out of the front yard. And that's, of course, the condition that we're proposing here for each of the three warehouse buildings. The redevelopment plan itself has no parking setback requirements. The literal enforcement of this, of course, is impracticable, and the waiver that we're requesting is reasonable and within the purpose and intent of the redevelopment plan. Again, it doesn't require it. SARAH has approved this site plan, this specific layout for each of the buildings. And again, as Mr. Webb described, the purpose of the layout of the parking areas in particular is to facilitate the separation of car and truck traffic. So that's really the intent of that design. And also, this is not a development on an existing road. It's a redevelopment project on a new road that will be built in accordance with the redevelopment plan. And this simply allows the front door of each new building to be located along that new road, adjacent to where typically employees would be parking. And then finally, there's, as Mr. Webb pointed out, 30 feet of green space between the parking lots and this new road, which allows more than enough room to provide landscaping along the road frontage. So I think that's clearly a waiver that's within the intent of the land development ordinance and certainly within the intent of the redevelopment plan. And then a few others, as it relates to lighting, as Mr. Webb pointed out, this is an exceedance of the maximum of 0.5-foot candles at the property lines. If you recall, this is a very limited area, which is adjacent to the private road between Buildings 1 and 2 that connects up to the existing Hercules plant. So no impacts to any of the adjoining properties. The third waiver was for the stormwater pipe size. Again, this is, as Mr. Webb put it, a limited condition, it's just a portion of the site. It only is applicable to the pipes over 24-inch in diameter, and there's practical difficulties related to complying with that specific standard. Again, which is something that's been thoroughly reviewed by the borough, is my understanding. And then finally, the land development ordinance requirement that sidewalks need to be provided in all areas where pedestrian traffic may occur. This design meets that intent. It's only those areas around the parking lots where it simply doesn't make sense to have a sidewalk. One parks in their car, they turn around, they go immediately into the building. The important point is we have pedestrian connectivity in sidewalks and the areas where people will actually use them, surrounding the perimeters of each of the warehouse buildings and connecting up to the new road. So that is also a waiver that, in my opinion, meets the intent of both the redevelopment plan and the land development ordinance. So with that, Mr. Tripp, unless you have anything further.
I don't.
concludes my direct testimony.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We conclude our direct case. Obviously, the questions in public, what is the question, I can read the order and what you see.
Mr. President, I'm not sure how you were going to handle our report, if you were going to go through any of the items, or to assume that anything I've recommended in my comments section that you're agreeing to provide to revise plans.
Um, Kevin, I believe that's the case. I mean, there were a few things we did address.
Yes, you did address some of those things.
The, 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 take a look at the dead end. Yes. Yes. You asked us to take a look, for example, at the dead-end condition, and we did that, and I think that was addressed. But anything that, Kevin, that we didn't specifically address in testimony, we will be able to address.
That's correct.
There's no need to go through it. Okay. Director.
All right, entertain a motion open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The first resident, Jim Robinson.
Mr. Jim, I have a question first.
Mr. Robinson, we have a microphone that we would like to come?
Can we ask my question first?
We have a microphone to capture everything.
Actually, Jim Robinson, Leavenboro, Alstair, Carlin. Actually, Lieutenant Green signed in before I did. He just signed in the second space, and I signed up top. So as a courtesy, you might want to let him speak first, because he was actually the first signature.
It's up to you. You can ask him.
Well, I defer to Lieutenant Green. But my question.
Okay, then defer to Mr. Green.
My question, while he's coming up, is this. I have questions of the applicants, because there were five witnesses. I have questions of the applicants, because there were five witnesses, and as Mr. Daddy O pointed out, Mr. Tripp even started to testify before he was stopped. And I have questions or comments for the board. So will all those be done at the same time?
Well, do you want to go now, or you?
No, no, no. What I'm asking you.
Answer the questions that you have.
I have questions for the applicants, and then questions and comments for the board. Would that be done at the same time or separate time?
You could do it all at the same time, just.
It's your meeting, Mr. Green.
Sure, you can do it right now.
Well, I'll let Mr. Green go, and then I will. Thank you.
The amount of people that have signed up with questions and concerns, we'll keep it two or three minute. Everybody has the oppo-
I'm gonna have to talk for three minutes.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to talk for three minutes. How about five minutes?
All right, we'll give you five minutes. How's that? Compliments.
Yes, my name is Ron Green. I live at 57 Nickel Avenue, Sarawak, New Jersey. Few people here might know me. I've been on this planning board. I served on this planning board for eight years. I moved over to the zoning board, and I served on the zoning board here in Sarawak for eight years, and I was the chairman. I'm not anti-warehouse, but I do have a few issues that I think I need to address with you. One of them is the traffic study that we had. I've been a police officer for 35 years before retiring. I worked in the Traffic Safety Bureau, and I held the rank of lieutenant as a shift commander from 1984 to 2005. So I'm experienced with these police operations and traffic and working within the borough. Just want to give you a little history on this. When I started in the police department in 1969, Hercules and Dupont's was a full-production plant. And our police department, between 415 and 515, five days a week, manned traffic posts, traffic lights at Midasink and Washington Road, at Main Street and Washington Road, which is also called Miller's Corner, and also at Journey Mill Road and Washington Road. And the reason we did that every day was because of the traffic, traffic from Hercules and Dupont's. There were approximately 800 to 900 cars that traveled in those roads, and we had to get them out. Around 1997, Dupont's and Hercules, the production in the plant started to cease, and eventually we stopped the traffic posts that we had. There was even a booth on Washington Road and Midasink Avenue, and there was a booth at Miller's Corner, and the borough took those away. There was no problems. We had 31,000 people living in Sarawak at that time. Now let's fast forward to today. Today, we have approximately 43,000 residents living in Sarawak. And why are we here tonight? We have an application with three warehouses, 165 loading docks, 270 trailer parking spots, and 1,000 cars. You have a traffic study that was talked about earlier. I dispute that. Does the planning board, did they commission someone to do a traffic study for the borough of Sarawak? Can someone answer that for me? Has the planning board had a traffic study? An independent traffic study?
Mr. Chairman, our office has traffic engineers on staff, and we've reviewed this report as submitted on behalf of the board.
Well, I'm making a suggestion that the planning board hire an independent traffic study, not from CME, but an independent. Now, I know CME, CNE, and they're very good. I worked with Mr. Cornell and everyone else. That's not the point. CME had the presentation with the mayor and council and also with SARAH, an independent, so you people can get the facts because there is some disputes on this traffic study. They're saying minor tweaking of traffic lights doesn't work. I also want to know, did the planning board send this application to the chief of police for his recommendations and for him to look at it and come back to the planning board and give you what his thoughts are? We're talking major traffic here. Has anyone done that? Do you have any police reports of the incidents and accidents that took place on the S-turn on Boardent Town Avenue? The testimony here today is that a lot of the trucks are going to be exiting that way. I think before a decision could be made here, that maybe the planning board should have all the facts. Get that traffic study. Get the chief's recommendations on what he thinks. Let's talk about widening the roads, because if they don't do it, taxpayers are going to do it. And who's the taxpayers? You, me, them. Let's be fair about this. I know my five minutes are just about up here.
That's okay, we got a couple more.
Is the planning board aware that a few weeks ago, tractor-trailer struck the traffic light at Boardent Town Avenue, Cheesecake Road, tied up traffic there? Caused a big mess. Now we're talking hundreds of trailers. And the applicant talks about making the road bigger on Cheesecake Road to let these trucks out. It's going to be a problem. Quick Check owns that property. They have an application in to put a gas station there. Has that been talked about? Is the board aware? And I read the report from the applicant on a traffic study where the trucks will be able to go across Cheesecake, across Boardent Town into Olbridge. Are you aware that Olbridge has an ordinance that bans trucks? Therefore, what's going to happen is the trucks that leave and go on Cheesecake Road, they're going to have to make the right or the left turn onto Boardent Town Avenue. They're not going to be able to get out. Olbridge was smart enough to have an ordinance banning trucks a long, long time ago. You're also talking about 1,000 cars. When these roads get backed up, where do you think these cars are going to go? Campbell Drive, Pine Tree Drive, Kramer Drive, Jensen Road, Green Valley. That's the way they're going to get out. I'm asking, think about this. This is much deeper than what it appears to be. There's more issues here. And... Lastly, I think that the residents of Sarawak deserve a little bit more here. Like I say, I'm not against warehouses. What I am against it in its present form. We have to think about the people who live here, the noise, the air, quality of life. So I ask, please, just consider this entire application. It's not as cut and dry as they're making it to be. There's a lot more implications than it's, than they're presenting here. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Jim Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jim Robinson, Leavenborough Square in Farlin. I very much appreciate the architecture, that the building trades will be involved, that jobs will be created. Maybe Mr. Mealy will tell us what those jobs will pay. I do have some questions because, as Mr. Green pointed out, a lot of questions weren't asked, and they have to be asked. I'm a little concerned about the fact that the improvements will take place in Section 3, and what uses are allowed in Section 3. They are different than these uses, Mr. Tripp said. Mr. Tripp, do you know?
Yes.
And I would, I would hope this isn't going to count towards my time, because he's answering my question.
The redevelopment plan, Section 3 has, hold on a second, I've got it here. In Sections 2 and 3, you've got power plants, energy centers, utilities, all uses permitted in Section 1, except warehouse use, which is a conditional use.
Okay.
And it's a conditional use, up to 750,000 square feet, if the blue and green roadway is connected, which means that the connection to Hartle has to be made.
Okay, so the warehouses are before you now, and you're not requiring the road be extended, and all of these other uses are not going to require that road because they're not going to have the kind of traffic.
No, they are.
That's not a question.
No, that, that's not, that's totally incorrect.
That's not a question, Mr. Tripp.
Yes, but it's totally incorrect.
I have an issue with that, with keeping the improvements until Section 3, including the improvements at Cheesecake Road, which ought to be done immediately. Do we know what the status of the Section 3 is? Is there an application? Is there? Have they appeared before a board? Have they? Been any, any official? Anything official on Section 3 yet?
Nothing at this point.
Nothing, okay.
But as, but you're asking me a question, and I'm going to point something out.
You said nothing at this point.
Well, but I want to correct something that you indicated on the record that was incorrect, which is that the redevelopment plan specifically provides it for all uses other than warehouse, the roadway section should be completed contemporaneously with the development. So you're doing the other-
Contemporaneous with development of-
Of Section 3.
Of Section 3.
Correct.
Which could be, for all we know, in 2050.
That's, yeah.
So we're going to be having a million square feet of warehousing in two years, and maybe if we're lucky, in 2050, we'll have the continuation of that road. That's-
Well, that's, that's what the redevelopment plan, that's the redevelopment plan.
Please, this is the public question. I'm asking a question.
But you have to let him answer.
You're asking me questions too.
He answered my question, I'm going to ask another question.
Okay, let her rip.
The 7,024 trees that are being taken down, is that only in connection with Section 1 or for the entire project?
The entire, the project before the board is Section 1, so those-
Those 7,000 trees that are coming down are all connected to this initial project.
That's correct.
So the four trees that are taking down. I noticed you had five experts here, and they were all very good. I appreciated them very much. I did not hear an environmental expert. You're taking down, you're, you're going to have 75% impervious coverage. That's going to create a lot of runoff, a lot of water in the area, and you're taking down 7,000 trees, and one of the things that trees do is take care of water issues. You had nobody testify to what the impact on the surrounding properties is going to be with respect to water or air as a result of the 75% impervious coverage, the parking lot and the warehouses, and 7,000 trees going away. And I think the board should ask for that. And Mr. Green brought up something about the board's traffic expert. You know, you're, when I was chairman of the planning board many, many years ago, I'm very old, we put in an escrow fee ordinance. And the purpose of that escrow fee ordinance was so that the board could hire, at the applicant's expense, experts to counter their experts. So for instance, when, when somebody came before the board and they had a traffic expert, the board had a traffic expert, not CME. I like CME, but with all due respect, they're the engineer for the borough, for SARAH, and for the planning board. Of course, they're going to like this project. They helped develop, they helped develop the ordinance that brought in this project. Mr. Green said there should be somebody independent, and I agree. $160,000 were posted in escrow fees. And those escrow fees are so that the board can hire their own professionals to counter the expertise of these excellent witnesses here, to give a different perspective, to protect the people of Sarawak. And I would respectfully suggest that before, before you vote on this, you hire your own experts to talk about traffic, to talk about sound, to talk about the environment, to talk about the water runoff implications to the surrounding areas. I would suggest respectfully that. My questions on solar panels were asked. I'm going to wait. I don't want to take up my time. I'm curious about the Arsenal Trade Center. You know, we have one arsenal in Sarawak, the Gillespie Shell Loading Plant that expired in 1918, 100 people were killed, 300 buildings were demolished. Sarawak's experience with arsenals hasn't been great, but I don't want to take time on that. We don't know who the tenant is, so I'm not so sure, as Mr. Daddy O pointed out, I'm not so sure how the traffic engineer could tell us where these people are going to go, where they're coming from, if they're coming from north or south, whether they're going to turn left or right. Also, I did not mention, we know that DDT was manufactured here, we know that the nitrous cations was manufactured here, we certainly should have the environmental expert for that. I'm going to get into the Washington Road bypass, but could I ask that the first exhibit be put up? You might have referred to it as A1. I don't know if the board referred to it as A1. But I would like that there, and I would like to note, and maybe I'll ask your engineer, I, I didn't scale it, I only used a pen, but the, I guess it would be the southwest corner of your property, of the Hercules property.
What about?
It, it, how far is it from Boardent Town Avenue? Approximately, I, you don't have to scale it.
You're talking here?
Yeah.
Referring to anyone? From Boardent Town Avenue?
Yes.
I mean, this is 1 inch equals 500, maybe it's 2,000 feet roughly?
2,000 feet, that's exactly what I, I scale it with my pen. I'm an engineer. And I raise this because it is possible to build these warehouses, to employ these people, to give jobs to the Middlesex County Building Trade, and run the road through internally, through Hercules property, over to that point, which is, as you said, 2,000 feet from Boardent Town Avenue. You would bypass Boardent Town Avenue, you would bypass Washington Road, you would bypass the S-curve on Boardent Town Avenue, which is very dangerous, you would bypass the S-curve on, or the two S-curves on Journey Mill Road, which Hartle Road is before. So that's, that's why I raised that question. I do have- I do have some questions for your traffic expert. Is it Mr. Lafayette? Alan?
Loki.
I'm sorry?
Loki, yes, Loki.
Okay. I appreciated your presentation very much, but I do have some questions on it. There's some drawings in the back, some renderings, they're very beautiful, they're very nice, I appreciate that. There were no copies of the traffic study for the public to take a look at. You can download it, and I downloaded it. Your ATRs, which are the automatic traffic quarters, they, and they're out there to examine traffic conditions. They were out according to your report from November 11th to November 19th, 2019, right?
Yes.
Okay. The ordinance specifically requires the counts not be done on holidays. November 11th, as we all know, child veterans know, is a holiday. So your counts have to be off by 12 to 15%. So I'm not sure if, how that affects the validity of your report.
The actual traffic count was done on Thursday, November 14th.
One day? Your traffic count was one day?
The ATRs are laid out over seven days, and collect seven days worth of data.
The traffic count was one day?
Yes.
Not a week? Well, is that typical?
Yes.
That's typical. Not by my experience, but you're the traffic expert. The, our ordinance, and I think it is, it would be laying new sections, it would be Section 26... Jay, help me, 64 probably talks about the traffic impact statement, requires that you also report on accidents in the area. The pen already raised that. You didn't report on the accidents in the area in that very well-done report. And I would say this, we're going to take a true picture, whether the ordinance required, because the ordinance also says that the board can ask you to provide any other information that they need necessary. And that used to be routine. When I chaired the planning board, that would be routine. The ordinance was the starting point. And then board members would say, well, based on their knowledge, based on their knowledge of the area, based on the knowledge that there are some dangerous S-curves there, we want you to provide some other information. So I would ask that the board ask the applicant to provide that information, to get those accident reports around the S-curve, because that's very important. It's very dangerous for cars around the S-curve. You can imagine what contractor trailers going through there. Also, I didn't see the level of service on the adjacent roadways. And I think the ordinance calls for the level of service on the adjacent roadways, which would be Boardentown Avenue and Washington Road. So I think that the board, protecting the residents of the town, and so that they can vote on this with full knowledge of the facts, should request that. And of course, I hope you will hire your own professional to review the answer that they are given. Now, if, I happen to have it here in the ordinance. The ordinance also said we must provide any other information requested by the appropriate board, required to make an informed assessment of potential traffic impact. Wow, I got that pretty close. If that is done, if the board requests that, will you do that? It's pursuant to the ordinance.
Well, we've analyzed the report, we've analyzed the traffic, we submitted a report. It was reviewed by CMA. And the other point, the other point that I'd like to make is that...
I understand that. CMA is the engineer. These people are the laypeople who are the sworn board members.
I understand that.
They request additional information based on their own understanding. Several of them live in the area, and they have a great understanding of this. Several of them drive Boardentown Avenue and Journey Mill Road, and they have a great understanding of this. If the board requests that, well, if the board requests it, I guess you have to reply.
Well, well, obviously, if we get questions from the board, and it goes through Mr. Cornell, and there are additional questions that are raised, we would address those questions, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
But I...
I would ask the board then to ask for that question. I have another question, I'm going to try and be brief here, but these are important. Are there, when you did your study, did you notice if there are sidewalks in these studies?
There are none.
Are there sidewalks on Boardentown Avenue?
That I'm not sure of.
Okay. Do you think that's important? Did, when you did your study, did you really indicate how many students walk to and from school, in Berks Park, in Kennedy Park, along Washington Road, in Mississippi Avenue, Cheesecake Road, Boardentown Avenue?
No.
Did you take into account the two firehouses, the two first aid squads, eight schools and childcare centers, including one for those students with disabilities, within two miles of this mega warehouse site? Did you take that into account?
We took into account the traffic operations at the adjacent signals that we impacted by 100 trips or more.
Okay. When you did your study, were you aware that a 1.8 million square foot warehouse was approved on Main Street in Cerville, not too far from this site? Were you aware of that?
No.
And if you were aware of that, might it change your conclusions?
Not particularly at this location.
You don't think we might have to change the timing of lights in two seconds to four seconds? And on those lights, for instance, those lights are on Boardentown Avenue, which is a county road. Now, can the borough change the timing on those lights on that county road? And just so that you know, the borough council, and Councilman Marr can attest to this, at their last meeting, they asked for a resolution objecting to a redevelopment project in Old Bridge that's more than six miles away, Jake Brown Road and the other side of its fronts on Route 9. They're objecting to that because of the excessive traffic people add to Boardentown Avenue. Now, do you think that's a wise thing for them to do, or is that not...
I don't, I don't think that's so far beyond what this traffic engineer considered, I, that's...
Do you know about that project, which the governing body said is going to put excessive traffic on Boardentown Avenue?
I'm not aware of that project.
Okay. If you were aware of that, and it's important enough, it's significant enough for the council to pass a resolution objecting to it, if you were aware of that, would that change your conclusions?
Not necessarily.
I'm sorry?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. So, almost a billion square foot...
Mr. Robinson, I think it's, I think we should give somebody else an opportunity to speak.
Okay, certainly.
I appreciate it, though, all your comments, everything will be taken into consideration.
Okay, and I'm going to come back at the end, I'm willing to stay.
Sure, if we've got time, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Ken Olszewski?
My name is Ken Olszewski, 108 North Edward Street in Cerville. I was born and raised in town, and when I was young, the signs coming into town were, "Welcome to Cerville, home of nationally known industry." Take you back a little bit on a trip, I'm trying not to be real long. But there was two DuPont plants, one on Washington Road, it's the fabrics and finishes plant, and one on Cheesecake Road. There was the Hercules plant, question here. There was National Lead, the other end of Cerville. And there was Owens, Illinois, which they refer to as the glass plant. Didn't last real long, it was followed by Sunshine Biscuit later. So, and, and the one thing that most people probably aren't aware, in addition to the borough coffers being filled with money from all those industries, another big addition of the copper came from Jersey Central Power and Light on River Road. Jersey Central, since we hosted it, it was part of the state gross receipts tax, and Cerville got a ton of money from Jersey Central. So I would think that the governing body in those days, and I know who they were because I came to the governing body meetings, the council meetings when I was in Houston, and they all smiled, they all looked happy. And I think we know why. I think one of their biggest problems probably was, how in the world do we spend all this money? So that's, that's the background of where I come from. I've been raised on ratables in Cerville. I know them, I like them. You'd be hard-pressed to find anybody in this town to come to the microphone and be more happy about ratables than Cerville. And then maybe, excuse me. And I think, I want to commend the mayor and council, the SARAH, the planning board, on trying to find more ratables for us. It's a tough job. We've been short-changed, just through circumstances. We don't have outlets to get the traffic to the major highways, to New Jersey Turnpike, the Interstate 287, et cetera, other than the NL site, which I certainly don't want to get into on here today. So it's a difficult job. I know you've got a tough job to do. And the questions that I have when it comes to where we're at here, what I question, and let me give you a little, little of my background, because I think it's pertinent here. I was a manager of the Eastern Distribution Center for a major international company. Furthermore, I was the vice president, which was the chief officer for a professional society, a very first-class one, called APEX, the American Production Inventory Control Society. I was the vice president of the Raritan Valley Chapel. So I've been around the block, members of APEX were top companies, like we talked about here, with Tramo Crow. By the way, my corporate did visits with Tramo Crow. I did some with them indirectly, so I know them for a long time, and they've always been known as a very first-class company. And that's, that's a plus for what we're talking about. But that's a little bit of my background. When you, when you come to warehousing, back in this, I ran, I ran our company in the 60s, 70s, and 80s. My nearest boss was in Denver, Colorado. But our company, and this was a pattern with most major companies of the day. They had warehouses in Portland, Dallas, LA, Kansas City, Chicago, Cleveland, Atlanta, Cleveland, Cincinnati area, and the Newark area, which was mine, in New Brunswick, New Jersey. How and why did that change? We had about eight warehouses, we called them distribution centers. How and why did that change? It changed when UPS, Next Day Air, and FedEx came in. They found that they no longer, most companies could get away. They could go from those seven or eight facilities down to perhaps three or four. What did that mean? Obviously, a lot of savings. It meant the savings in overhead of the facility, but it also meant savings in inventory. So that was the next route that was taken. In, probably starting in the early 80s, I had a company specifically, and what we did, with a lot of emergency items. We were the world's largest maker of belts and hose, rubber belts and hose. So it was very prone to emergency products. When your furnace broke down in the winter, in those days you needed it, usually today for it. You needed a belt. When your air conditioner broke down in the summer, it was the same case. Naturally, you went to somebody, you called somebody that could fix it. They probably didn't have that in stock, they went to the distributor, our distributor. If they didn't have it, we were the backup. So the inventory, the inventory was generally about a 60-day supply. That was an inventory of a manufacturer, that was a backup inventory. Now, a lot of that has changed today. And when we talk about what kind of, what kind of tenant we're going to have in these buildings, the tenant means all the world. If we're going to go to, we're going to have an Amazon-type tenant, they don't have any, they're almost like that, the bike who just left, like this trucking company. They want the floor cleared at night, and they, they have, they'll be bringing stuff in the next day. So it's a quick in and out. It's not a 60-day supply. So the tenant means everything. And when, when you're talking about, when you're talking about facilities like this on a road, I happen to think, I've been around, I worked for DuPont. DuPont, let me tell you something about DuPont. DuPont in the 70s and 80s and 60s was a very first-class company. It was one of the premier companies in the US. And their slogan, one of them was, "I think better things and better living through chemistry." They were an admired company. DuPont, DuPont owned, DuPont was the largest shareholder in General Motors. And the Justice Department fought them, saying that was a restraint of trade. Of course, today, the Justice Department doesn't do anything, they let everybody throw to the world, to the moon. But in those days, they fought them for several years, and a 1957 Supreme Court ruling made DuPont divest their shares of General Motors. But I worked for DuPont in the summers, when I was in college, et cetera. And a first-class company, they, products that they had, they did a lot of, not only trucking, but there was a lot of train, in and out with train. They used train, and I am, I'm sure Hercules probably did the same thing. So when it came to traffic, yeah, I packed up what Mr. Green said when he was up here. But I can go a little further back than, than he can, and tell you that in 1955, there were, there were cops at the lights at those three intersections he talked about. I know I was involved in it numerous times, and I've opened up the drive, but with my family, at Minute Stink, there would be somebody there at 11 o'clock at night, controlling that light, and they were at those other two areas, too. So my issue is, I love ratables, I admire what you people have done. It's nobody's fault. Everybody knows the song Margaritaville, where it says, "Somebody claims there's a woman to blame, but I know it's nobody's fault." It's nobody's fault what's happened at Cerville. That's the way it is, we're just on the short end of not having the transportation. I'm worried about Minute St. Avenue, I'm worried about Cheesecake Road. I ride on those areas regularly, and I've done so all my life. To think that we could have a potential of 50, 50 trucks, 50 tractors and trailers an hour during peak hours? That, to me, is quite a joke, that they could do that. And when they're backed up on Cheesecake, they're backed up on Cheesecake, where are the cars going to be? The cars that travel there now, and the cars that are coming in with this development? They're not going to be in back of the tractor-trailers, I can tell you that. I speak from experience, I commuted from Cerville to New Brunswick for 30 years. And when you got to East Brunswick, you know where the cars were? They were all over the side streets. They were all over, when you went down Tyse's Lane, that large housing development on the, on the northerly side, and bounded by the, by the easterly side of Ryder's Lane, that had nothing but traffic going through there. So I can see, I can absolutely see Kendall Park, all of Laurel Park, Kramer Drive, Jensen, Reed Street. They will have traffic all over them if there's some, something going on. It's fine if we get into facility, to some of the tenants that I talked about that are smaller, and don't use the full extent of the facility, or, you know, they have some kind of a...
Mr. Olszewski, can we let, you know, somebody else?
I'll be finished in a minute, if they... If they, if they let, and have smaller tenants, or people that don't have a lot of traffic, et cetera, that could work out. But I'm very, very concerned about the traffic. I have one final question. I want to talk about, and I guess that's to the traffic gentleman, about the inbound trucks. How, during peak hours, how many inbound trucks would we have scheduled between the peak morning and the peak afternoon? I, I looked and say it's something like forty-three?
We, we analyzed for thirty-one entering trucks during the morning peak hour and twelve entering trucks during the evening peak hour.
Could those trucks, we have no control, as I understand, on the route for the trucks entering the facility? Is that correct?
We have no direct control.
My, my question is, could those trucks conceivably be on Washington Road and, and going down Minnesick? Is that, that a possibility?
We don't anticipate it, but a portion could be on Washington.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
We don't anticipate that, but a portion could be on Washington.
You, you don't anticipate it, but it could happen. Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ruth Ann Mahoney.
Cut off at eleven. Cut off at eleven.
Eleven.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven.
Good evening.
Oh, sorry, just give me one moment.
She just has to charge her...
Do you need to plug in?
I do.
Yes. No, that's okay.
Is that your port?
Hold on. Your ball, oh, that's all right.
You are? Good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Good.
Ruth Ann Mahoney, eleven, no, oh, God. To Gerard Plaisen, Farley. I do not have the credentials or the, to Gerard Plaisen, Ruth Ann Mahoney. That's okay. I don't have the knowledge or the credentials of the last three gentlemen, but I'm here as a resident and a concerned citizen. Excuse my voice. The traffic, nobody's mentioned the school buses during your peak hour. I think peak hours should be peak hours, because peak, we all know in Serville there's more than one peak hour in the morning and the afternoon. I do, I'm a school aide on the school bus. We now have tremendous amount of traffic in the mornings and the afternoons with the school buses. It's unsafe, the amount of traffic that's there now. I can't imagine what will happen in the two years from now. You have children walking to school, crossing Washington Road to go to the high school and the middle school. You also have two elementary schools on Washington Road. Those children are bused, generally. The trucks right now, for the summer camp, as an example, I come home and I cross Ernston, I come towards North Ernston and cross Washington. Between 12:30 and 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and it's not peak hours, there's between three to five trucks before I could come out of School Drive to turn onto Ernston. They either go straight onto North Ernston, or they make a right or left onto Washington, and they're tractor-trailers and box trucks. Now, you're going to have more of that as predicted with the warehousing. I understand the warehousing makes jobs. I get, I get all of that, and the building, so forth. But I'm looking at the safety of our children and our residents. These gentlemen make the warehousing and so forth sound like a marvelous idea, a great idea, and it's going to be beautiful, until you get onto the streets of Serville, which are two-lane roads. They're not four-lane roads. I lived in East Brunswick. I used to travel Cranberry Road. Have you been down Cranberry Road lately? That's what's going to happen here. You can't move. Also, nobody's mentioned taxes. You've mentioned ratables. Is it going to be a pilot, which is almost a waste of money? They get to pay a little bit every year for twenty or thirty years, don't pay their true taxes, as my knowledge goes. Also, it was brought up about the resolution the council wants to pass for Old Bridge. Do we look hypocritical? We're asking Old Bridge not to send us trap, more trucks and traffic for in town, and we're saying we're going to put more? Doesn't make sense. The infrastructure, to the roads, to the water, to the sewers, can we really handle it? They're going to have new infrastructure, but it's going to go into our old infrastructure. And we're still on two-lane roads with two, almost two million other square feet of warehousing on Main Street. Traffic, you're talking Route Nine, the Turnpike, what about Route Thirty-Five, getting to Route Thirty-Five? It's down Washington Road or Board in Town. The employee traffic, a thousand cars. What's going to happen? Where are they going to go? Where are we going to go? Through, I've come from East Brunswick. I can attest to what Mr., the gentleman ahead said. Our roads in the neighborhoods were horrendous. Why do you think I came here? I'm talking about leaving here now, because why be here? It's going from the frying pan to the fire. I've been here seventeen years. There's a park, is it Burke's Park by the S curve? What's going to happen to Burke's Park? Because they're talking about removing the stop sign in that area. Nobody's mentioned what's going to happen to Burke's Park. All right, wait a minute, I just have my little list. Like I said, I'm just a layperson here. And the idling of the trucks. Are they three-minute idols, as the buses are only allowed to idle for three minutes? Is that, that's a state law, I believe. Do the trucks, are they allowed longer than three minutes? Because they're, they're within housing districts, and the buses can only idle three minutes because of air pollution. And the DEP comes and checks on us, or the Department of Environmental Protection. They've come to the high school and checked that we're not idling. And lighting, how, I mean, I talked about lighting, but if they're large lights, are they going to reflect onto the neighborhoods that are in that area? And you also have a school on Cheesequake Road for special needs children. So with all of that, I'm looking at some other things as safety. And I really, really hope you all take that into consideration, because you also have children walking to school, not only the school buses. Let me tell you, ride on that school bus for a week or two weeks and see how many times you'll almost get hit by a truck, because they don't, they don't want you anywhere near them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth Ann.
Thank you. Walter W., Twenty Reed Street.
Good evening.
Walter with Arzic, Twenty Reed Street, Serville, New Jersey.
Ladies and gentlemen, the last time I was here, I was sitting in one of those chairs, twenty years ago or so, I can't even remember how long. But tonight is the first time I saw this application, okay? And I lived in this area for all my life. I live on Reed Street, which is just a few streets off of Minnesick. Now, as far as traffic goes, and I'm not going to get into details, Mr. Green, Robinson, everybody else talked about it, I agree with this independent study. Very important that the board do that, okay? When Hercules and DuPont were in full operation, Hercules had about twenty-five hundred people working there. They had two exits, one out on Journey Road, one on Minnesick Avenue, one out Cheesequake, okay? And DuPont, one on Washington, one on Cheesequake. Well, when peak hour hit, I remember, and this was every day, and no trucks, cars were backed up from the light on Minnesick Avenue, all the way down to the railroad bridge, and almost into the plant entrance, and I make a picture of that. I've seen this, and we've experienced it. Today, where will they go if they're backed up down? They're not going to sit on Minnesick Avenue. Jay, you know where they're going to go. They're going to go right up Kramer, up Jensen, down Reed Street, and on Washington Road. They're going to take all those little collective streets, they're going to go down. So please, you need to all consider this. Now, as far as these three warehouses, conceptually, I have no issue, okay? Conceptually. But why are they going to be built all at once? We don't phase anything in this community anymore. We can't build one and then see how it impacts the area, and then adjust as we go into the future years? Maybe have to build partal on a pro-rated basis, okay? In advance, if it impacts our roadways. We could do that. That would be a good recommendation. Why not? Developer would have a conceptual approval, okay? But he builds one warehouse, okay? After a year or two, we see how it impacts, we do a traffic study, and then we go to half phase. And then the third phase. Would the board be willing to consider something like that? Think about it. Developer gets what he wants, but he's not going to get it all at once, and the community can live with this, okay? And gradually see how it works. I don't think you have a problem with that, Jay, but I'm going to let the board decide that. And as far as these roads, partal way, you know, parallel in Washington Road, that was one of our ideas years ago, okay? To alleviate traffic on Washington Road. Because we know darn well, the trucks and so forth, they're going to come from South River, they're going to come off to Turnpike, come down Washington Road, and try to get down Minnesick. Okay? That's why we put that partal way in there on our master plan, X amount of years ago. And I'm glad that it's part of this plan, but it's a long-range plan, okay? Before, when we had developers come in with large projects, multi-housing projects and so forth, we had a thing called pro-rated infrastructure. Right, Jay? Where we put sewers in, okay? Where the developer had to put sewers in, and roadway, water lines in. And as the new developments came into place, like on this project, as they expanded, okay? They would pay their pro-rated share towards that project, towards that infrastructure, and then the original developer would get his money. And then everybody would share the cost. Because who's going to pay for that extension twenty years from now? I guess I'm going to ask you, Jay, who do you think's going to pay for that? You guys did the study on this thing.
Mr. Chairman, as part of the redevelopment plan, it's very specific that ad that adjacent property develops, they're responsible for constructing the roadway.
So in other words, each developer pays his chunk as, as he develops through the site, before the roadway, or to connect the road to Harrow.
It's a little more specific than that, depending on the use. If there's additional warehouse use, that road has to be connected before you can get any additional warehouse approval beyond this first phase.
And what I'm asking is, why can't we do what we've done in the past? Make the developer pay for the roadway? And as new development comes in, before they can develop, they have to pay, you know, to reimburse the cost of the original developer's cost. We could do that. We've done it in the past. So that's another, another interesting concept that the board should consider. Now, one final thing, and I'm not going to drag this down, is the phasing is very important. Building number three, you can put the Exhibit A board up for us, please. I know developers looking to make this project route aesthetically pleasing, drive-in, all your offices facing each other, all the car parking is on the internal Road A. But where are all the tractor-trailers parked on Building Three? They back up to our park, okay, which is, it's, needs some, needs some work in there, but eventually, with some, they're going to develop that park back onto something beautiful. So all these tractor-trailers and everything are backed up to the residences on Kramer. And as you come down Minnesick Avenue, what do you see? What is the first thing you see when you come down Minnesick Avenue? Tractor-trailers everywhere. You don't see office buildings. If you want to see the office buildings, you have to go down the road inside the facility, inside the warehouses, okay? Why can't that be flipped? To put the truck parking on the inside, so when people in our community come down Minnesick Avenue and along Cheesequake, what do they see? They see a beautiful office building. They don't see tractor-trailers. They don't hear noise up there to the residences, okay? Even if you turned the building or made it smaller, just shifted a little bit, so you had a nice, beautiful facade. What did we do down at DuPont? You go down to DuPont, Jay remembers this, he was here. When DuPont put their warehouse in, we asked them to make it look nice, and it looks nice. They got a tree planted, and you know where they have their tractor-trailers? In the rear, you don't see them. So that I would expect the board to please look at that, work with these developers, this developer, and see what we could do about getting those tractor-trailers on internal parts of site. You all remember, Hercules was always secluded. You didn't see anything when you came down, down the streets, it was always all about. Here, you come down Minnesick Avenue, and all you're going to see is a whole row of two-hundred tractor-trailers, and lighting, and trucks running, and you've got people over there on, on Kramer, that are going to see all this, and there's a lot of people that use this route. So we want to make things...
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
The phasing and that, rotating that building, I think that's very important, if we flip that building around.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Evelyn Smith.
I, I would like my engineer to address that, because there's a reason, there's an answer to what was just suggested, which I would, I, I'm letting, you know, we're not interrupting, we're trying to let people go.
Sure.
But there is a, a response to the last section about where the tractor-trailers are.
The redevelopment plan actually prohibits putting tractor-trailers in the front yard, so the only place it really can go would be the opposite to that. We have put it into the rear. That, that trailer area, that truckport's actually elevated quite a bit, so there's actually... So, there's actually a significant retaining wall that will be visible as for motors coming down Minnesick Avenue towards Cheesequake, that intersection, actually be looking at retaining walls and landscaping, not necessarily into the truck ward.
And is there fencing? I'm sorry.
You hear that?
I'm sorry. Is there fencing around the property?
There's, there is not fencing proposed, the plantings. And again, like a twenty-foot-high retaining wall. So, you're, you know, you're, you're going to be looking at, at, at the landscape front of a, a retaining wall.
They want the aesthetics on their internal roadway. They don't want to provide the aesthetics to the community. That's why it's standing there. There's no reason that building can't be flipped around. No reason at all. And no landscaping is going to cover that. And with the noise next to the park, okay? It's, it's, it's not a good point. And I'm surprised no one saw that and, and is pushing for this. I think it's very important to the community that when you come down Minnesick Avenue, if you want to see an office building, you see an office building. You don't see two-hundred trailers. And I don't care about a wall, a wall's not going to do anything. And who wants to look at a wall?
Hi. Evelyn Smith, 124 Kendall Drive. I have lived here for almost sixty years, okay? I have lived on Kendall Drive for almost sixty years. We bought the house from my parents, and I still live there. When the railroad bridge on Armston Road was being replaced, it was almost two years of every car in the entire town and so on coming down Kendall Drive. There were times, now, my house is right in the corner of Kendall and Pine Tree. If you go up Kendall, and you don't make a right, and you don't make a left, you'll go into my living room. Don't do that. And I could not get out of my driveway because the cars were all backed up from Cheesequake Road past my house, because everyone was cutting through there. And trust me, it'll happen again. It'll be worse, because, given the numbers that they have, one-hundred-and-seventy docks, which comes to about seven new trucks an hour. If I say they're all going to be spread out for over twenty-four hours. They're not, of course. They're going to be at peak hours. And so, there's going to, they're going to be there. Cheesequake Road is going to be backed up all the way to Dupont's, okay? And it's going to take forever. And two seconds is not enough to make a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn with a tractor-trailer. My brother drives a truck. He would probably tell you the exact same thing, okay? Then you're talking a thousand-twenty-seven parking spaces. That comes to three-hundred-and-forty-two cars per shift, okay? And again, they're not going to be going down the major roads. They're going to go through the developments, especially Kendall Drive. Kendall is the biggest cut-through in town, I think. And we have no sidewalks, okay? Our children, I don't have children, little ones anymore, they're all grown. But there are a lot of children who I have seen moving into my neighborhood because most of the original tenants, they have grown old and moved or died, unfortunately. And they're bringing in more little ones again. I don't even like crossing Kendall Drive to get to my neighbor across the street, because I have to wait until cars give me, you know, a little bit amount of time to get through to the other side of the road, okay? It is a traffic nightmare. I implore you to please get an independent traffic study, okay? Putting that little strip down on the road and taking the reading for one day is ludicrous. Uh, that's, well, now, as far as the, I figured out that each way, if only not even half of the cars come through Laurel Park. That's a hundred-and-fifty cars going through Laurel Park each way, three times a day, okay? This, it's not the town I grew up in. It used to be very, very suburban. It's gotten a little too big, as far as I'm concerned. And I am not against warehouses, and I'm not against ratables, okay? But why do we have to wait until God only knows to have the road extended through to Journey Mill Road so that the traffic, especially the trucks, will go out that way in order to get to Route Eighteen and the turnpike? There's, there's absolutely no reason why we have to wait until Section Three, which, you know, like I said, God only knows when that's going to go in, if it ever will, you know? There's, there's no reason not to have that road built all the way through to alleviate the traffic on Cheesequake. It's not going to alleviate, alleviate, yeah, alleviate most of the car traffic. But it will alleviate the truck traffic, which, you know, and, and that intersection of Cheesequake and Borden Town Avenue, okay? In order to really be able to put, have tractor-trailers making a left or a right there, you would have to take part of Quick Check's parking lot room and part of the little strip wall that's there, parking lot, in order to, you know, because a tractor-trailer doesn't turn like a car. They have to go out and around in order to, and so they're going to be stopping all the traffic on, on Borden Town. And they just, uh...
We understand. We got your point.
Yeah, uh, there was one more thing. Oh, the trees, okay. Coming back to what you were saying before. Looking at this, which is the thing that's up there now, okay? The trees seem to stop just before it turns into Minnesick. There are no trees behind the bays and the parking for the trucks. So, they will be completely exposed, because you're taking down all the trees in that area and not putting any more up. So, when you're coming down, you're going to just see a whole lot of tractor-trailers parked there, okay?
All right, thank you.
Are the trees that are going to be replaced for the seven-thousand that are coming out, are they going to be saplings? Or are they going to be fully-grown trees? I worked on job site of Exxon in Clinton. They brought in thirty-foot trees to line their streets.
I believe the applicant that retestified, was it?
It's, um, it's a contribution, because you're, you're clearing so much area, you can't, you can't fit the trees. So, we're planting trees, and we're also making a contribution, which is what your ordinance contemplates in these circumstances. So, there's going to be a substantial contribution to the tree fund that's required by the ordinance.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with, you know, that, yes, you're going to give money towards the Shade Tree Commission and all. I want to know, the trees that you are going to put in, what size are they going to be? Are they going to be my height? Or are they going to be thirty-foot, fully-grown trees which will hide the entire place?
Per ordinance, there are required to be a minimum of three-inch caliper at the time of planting. So, they will not be thirty-foot trees, but they will be conforming with the ordinance requirements.
Okay, so a hundred years from now, we might actually not see the entire warehouse area, because it takes that long for a tree to grow. I know. I love trees. I have lots on my lawn, my property. That, that's, that's ludicrous. It, 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 they should be at least, all right, maybe not thirty, but twenty-foot high?
We're taking, but we need to move on and let the next individual, please.
Also, what, what's going to happen to the deer? That whole area is loaded with deer, and you're taking away their habitat. Maybe you guys don't care about animals, but I do.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. You mentioned manufacturing is a possibility. What kind of manufacturing? I mean, because it could be hazardous waste? And if they just hire a person and put him in there, how are you going to know? Are you approving every single tenant?
Certificate of occupancy?
That would, that would go through another department. It wouldn't be the planning board. It would go to the zoning office versus the construction for, for a CO or something along those lines. But they would have to comply with whatever regulations for the other departments in the town.
Thank you.
Okay. So, just the two things, well, three things. Traffic, number one. Number two, the road getting through to Journey Mill. It's absolutely urgent, and...
The deer.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't deer.
Trees.
Trees.
Trees, yes, sure.
We, we have, I believe, a number of additional residents that may want to speak tonight. And we do have a timeframe that we are going to cut this off. So, I would like to give as much time to all of the residents remaining, so they have their opportunity to speak for the board. And again, I believe a lot of the questions so far have been surrounding the traffic. So, if you have something other, other to, something different to add, other than just traffic, it would be appreciated, because again...
Will there be a traffic light at the entrance to Road A? Where the people are going to be coming, and trucks are going to be coming in and out, and people are going to drive and drive on Cheesequake Road? How are they going to get out?
The applicant can answer that. There will not be. Thank you. And again, just to reiterate, there are a number of residents that I believe would like to still speak. So, if you do have...
Rachel Barrero?
And again, the point should be made, if you have something about traffic, we understand. But please limit it to a brief explanation, because again, we've heard it several times. And I want to give as much time to every resident here that has spent hours waiting for their turn.
My name's Rachel Barrero. I live on Seleski Drive. But I have two minutes to talk, so I wish I could be quick.
Okay, great, thank you.
But I did write it down, so I didn't forget anything. So, my name is Rachel Barrero, and I live on Seleski Drive within two-hundred feet of your subject area. I am here today to say that I object to the proposed warehouses to be built behind my home. It is Cerval's duty to deny the applications, as it will not help our community, it will hinder it. Business parks are not on two-way roads, they are on highways. I have lived in Cerval my whole life. I've lived here in the nineties and clearly remember the traffic at four P.M. daily when Hercules let out for the day. My mom would have to leave the house a half hour ahead of time to go point seven miles to my dance class. It was impossible to make a left on Minnesick at that time. Cerval has to consider that the developer is underestimating the traffic on our streets. I mean, come on, they are proposing spaces for four-hundred-and-thirty-five tractor-trailers, a thousand-car parking spots, and daily garbage pickup. Thank you for adding it. Who is going to pay for the wear and tear of our roads? My taxes have gone up steadily over the past ten years since I have owned my home. How much taxes will the warehouses be responsible for? Will they even be paying taxes? I feel they should. The way I see it, there will be a lot more wear and tear in our roads, fifty-plus eighteen-wheelers on our streets. Who will pay for the extra police needed to police the traffic, the downed poles, and the accidents as a result of the extra traffic? It should not be the residents of Cerval. In just the past two weeks, we have had a downed traffic pole on Borden Town as a result of an eighteen-wheeler and a motor vehicle accident, or rear-end, I believe it was. And this is only phase one. What are the other phases? As seen today on our Block Four to Three, Lot Fifty-One Plan, it says to be the subject of a separate application. I'm curious what those other applications are. What, what are the peak hours that you are referencing, the traffic? It is during school hours, when my four children will be walking to the middle and high school. Who will be paying for the extra crossing cars and expansion of Minnesick to fit the thousand cars? Who will be avoiding the trucks? You said yourself that the object is to separate the cars and the trucks. It is only a matter of time before a child gets hit with all the extra traffic. I can only imagine how much pollution will happen to my property as a result of millions of square feet of space being covered by asphalt and building. Cerval needs to protect my property from the thousand-foot oil leakage and property runoff. How will I know that my garden is safe, I have vegetables in for my children to eat? Cerval has a duty to keep us safe. What will be stored in these warehouses? As a community, it is our responsibility to keep everyone safe. Instituting a law that the warehouses, that the warehouses can and cannot store is vital. The town needs to institute laws about light pollution. When I bought my house, I bought it with the understanding that my backyard is dark. My backyard should not be let all night long. I know that Cerval has noise ordinances. Will this apply to the warehouses as well? How many of the eighteen-wheelers that will be, how about the eighteen-wheelers that will be driving the road? Will Cerval be instituting noise ordinances for the property? I hope so, because if the law is good for the residential community, it should apply to all. I suggest the wall should be up to help our community sleep at night. This will help diminish noise and light pollution. Speaking of the noise and light pollution, we plan to cut down seven-thousand trees. There are many benefits to trees. Trees improve air quality and reduce carbon monoxide. They also filter fine particles, making the air cleaner to breathe. They drink groundwater to prevent flooding, and they improve water quality and enrich the soil with nutrients. They prevent soil erosion, prevent noise pollution, and they can lead to decreased stress levels and cardiovascular problems. They prevent global warming. Trees are homes to the thousands of animals, provide shade, home, hire million-plus-square-footage warehouse, tractor-trailer, and cars. They add to the beauty of my background and property value. If they are killing seven-thousand trees, Cerval needs to demand that they replace all of them, which I know they have said that they, they're giving you some sort of fun. But in my experience, you are, you have all these extra housings that we now have to build. Where are we going to find the property to plant all of these seven-thousand trees that they will be knocking down? Finally, please consider the wildlife that they are killing and destroying their parks. It has gone, I have gone for walks behind my house. I've seen beaver, turkeys, deer, fox, owls, frogs, snakes, turtles, just to name a few. What will they be doing for them? I bought my house because I love this town and the refuge behind my home. You are taking away the beauty of not only my backyard, but the thousands of animals that I share with. Please consider this in your decision and say no to the warehouse.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Randy Edie Braun, Seleski Drive.
Randy Edie Braun, Zaleski Drive.
I'm going to be real sure here, I think. You guys cut out a lot of the things that people already talked about.
Susan.
You could speak up, please.
My name is Randy Braun. I live on Zaleski Drive, 36 Zaleski Drive. I've been a resident in Searville for my entire life. And I used to go swimming over here in Duck's Nest. I don't know if you know it, Bailey Pond now. Okay, but also Hercules Pond. I had swimming lessons when I was a kid. I met my wife at Bailey Pond. So I've been, I've been in town a long time. It's been years since Hercules closed its doors. And the fences rotted over the years, and I freely walked into the woods, both of the Zaleski Drive. My daughter, who just spoke to, talked about things we observed, we observed deer, turkeys, coyotes, foxes, even beaver. You probably didn't know we had those in Searville. And a bear, which we now have signs warning about that. Has there been an environmental impact study and whether we're evaluating these things to see what will happen there?
An environmental impact study was required and submitted as part of the application.
What did it say about those two?
I mean, I, I don't recall specifically how it addressed that. I mean, there are impacts to the habitat, which is described as part of the redevelopment plan process, obviously. To, to the extent that there will be redevelopment of property, there will be impacts to some of those habitats you've described.
What's the impact of trees?
Again, without redevelopment or without removing trees, there can be, there can be no redevelopment.
Do you have an environmental impact statement?
I did not write it, no.
Is somebody here writing environmental impact?
Someone from your firm.
Someone from my firm did, yes.
And you don't know anything about what may be?
I do, I'm trying to answer your questions. I don't know specifically to be able to restate it verbatim, so.
As a threatened and endangered species study done...
I'm sorry, mister, I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble hearing you.
As a threatened or endangered species study?
Threatened and endangered species were identified as part of the DEP reviews. And in fact, there were none found to be, no expanded wetlands buffers, no enhanced riparian zones associated with the stream quarter. So there are no impacts of threatened and endangered species habitats here on the site.
Has a study been done of, has a study been done of the runoff that occurs off your property and is putting those upon your...
An extensive study, yes.
What are you going, how are you going to treat that?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
What form of treatment are you going to use on that piece of material?
We have a series of stormwater basins that provide water quality prior to discharge in accordance with the DEP regulations.
Do you have oil water separate on there?
We do not.
And what are the main contaminants you get off of paved surfaces dislodged as well? Oil, you did not?
Again, our plan is fully compliant with the DEP regulations and Sayerville's own ordinances regarding stormwater management for impervious areas.
You're going to have no pollution? Has anybody evaluated all the pollutants that come off the trucks in the area? Have you set up air pollution monitors?
We have not.
On the application that you, that you put, a very small application that you provided in February of 2021, you talk about impervious surfaces. Now look here, you have three buildings you're talking about. The percent of the lot covered by buildings in the first one is 35.6%. The percent of the lot covered by pavement is 76.2%. Add those two together, and it comes up to 111.8% of the property.
No, no, no.
Buildings are also impervious coverage, they're double counting.
Specifically mentions pavement.
Pavement, and including all impervious surfaces, including rooftops of buildings.
The smaller number is the building, and the larger number is the building and all pavement.
Well, that's not what it said in the application. This leads me to think a lot of things have been done by them incomplete. I do not believe an operation of this magnitude should be in such an urban area as Searville anyway. Not a rural area. This leads me to believe that it should be in a very rural area. Where you don't have all these citizens that are going to be so close to all these buildings. And we're going to have trucks that are going to endanger our, our children.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, Robert K. Six Steiner.
And I know we've been very liberal with the time, but it's eleven o'clock at night, so we're going to, we're going to actually implement the two minutes here. So, sorry, if you have more than that...
Steiner Court.
Robert Kellet, Steiner Court. K E L L D D. Steiner, S T E D, any more?
Time.
City Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I would like to...
I got it.
Recommend that the villagers build the road before putting any warehouses up. That'll eliminate a lot of traffic, a lot of poles being taken down, a lot of bridges not being hit. Another question. The toxins in Hercules should be remediated first before any building goes up. Clean the area up, clean the dirt up. And then another question. Has the railroad been contacted about South Minisink? The bridge is only two-inch clearance with tractor-trailers along it. Has anything been done about that? Has the railroad been contacted? Because they're thinking about going off Washington Road down South Minisink. The railroad bridge is 13-8, trucks are 13-6.
The best of my knowledge, the railroad wasn't notified, and most likely it needs to be.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
There's no requirement to notify the railroad of an application. Unless they're within the 200 feet. Unless they're within the 200 feet. But I, I'm not sure if the applicant had testimony or anything in their expert reports with regards to that.
So the railroad wasn't contacted about a crash going up in that area?
No, I mean, we acknowledge the, the clearance limitation that's there, which is why we're not prescribing our trucks to utilize that portion of the roadway.
Well, my work would lead you to build a bridge, a road out the back first, or we do any building in there, any warehouses.
That's addressed in the redevelopment plan.
It seems like you want to build each new warehouse first, and later on down the road. But the recommendation, and I'll make it, go first, the road first.
I think...
So just to clarify, the redevelopment plan was approved by the council? And part of the redevelopment plan was the steps in order to get to...
It doesn't seem like Dopey's taking into consideration...
Can I finish what I'm saying? All right, so anyways, what I'm saying is, the redevelopment plan dictates the process in which the sites are going to be developed. The roadway is part of that redevelopment plan and how it's going to be developed over time.
Will that be done...
So the redevelopment plan stipulates that, I guess, phase one, which is, or I don't want to call it phase one.
Section one.
Section one is what's here tonight, and there's section two and section three. And the redevelopment plan governs how the roadways will be developed.
So you wouldn't think it would be smart to put the road in first, then to rebuild?
The board does not have the jurisdiction to do that. It is the, it is the redevelopment ordinance that was put in place that governs that, and that's what controls. The mayor and council.
So they did it backwards?
Well, it went through in the prior process. I mean, that's not really before this board tonight, but ultimately.
I'm so sorry.
So in another way, you're doing it backwards? You, you do all early areas first, or you put the builders up?
Well, again, this, the redevelopment plan was vetted for, I'm not sure exactly when it was vetted, 2018, I think.
2018.
2018, and it's been in effect, and now this is the first section of that.
If you go back to the drawing board and look at that better.
I appreciate that, but that's not for this board to decide.
Steven Levinson.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Steven Levinson, L E V E N S O N five Telegraph, living in Searville, New Jersey. I will be quick. I would recommend that you hire an independent traffic, do an independent traffic study. And when you hire that person to do an independent traffic study, have them do the traffic study, including all the other development that's going on in this town. Riverton, the warehouses on Main Street. Traffic sucks in this town already, and we have a lot of development that's coming in that's only going to make it worse. They're one of a handful, I could probably think of, up, off, up of, off the top of my head. And he did his study on his property. Let's do a study on all the properties combined and really see how this town is going to be traffic-wise in 10 years from now. And let's try and plan it so 10 years from now, we're not at the cross, a standstill that we're approaching rather quickly. You go down Washington Road, anytime in the morning trying to drop kids off to school, you know what I'm talking about. And with Riverton, with his property, with the Main Street warehouses, it's only going to get worse. It's not going to get any better unless we add more roads. I understand that this road is going to come later with section three, but we need new roads now, not later. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Egan. Pat Broadwick. Pat Bodak.
Mr. Bodak.
No, it's, it's a woman. B O D A K H I N Drive. No, okay. I can't read the name, but 31 Birch Terrace. That's it.
Thanks, Council, for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight. I am here, my name is Anna.
Please spell it.
Yeah, R A N A, R A N A. Yeah. Thirty-one Birch. Yeah, everybody stressed about the safety. Like I said, we have one route, Borden Town and Cheesequake and Minisink. These three are the three arteries feeding this operation. So as long as we don't expand it or do anything or build skyways, period, skyways to the expressway, this is not going to work. This shouldn't have been a, this shouldn't have been a nonstarter, but it has gotten this far. There's other things which people need not discuss, which is the water runoff. As we have seen after the repayment of Onston Road, we see it flooding at both sides. The reason is now it's raining, like three months' rain comes in two hours. That's the reality. So the water runoff, we don't know what's going to happen for the next few years. As you see in Germany, other countries, same thing. It's coming down that hard, these people cannot analyze, nobody can analyze, period. So we don't know what's going to happen, cutting down some, some of the trees, it's not going to hurry. So we need to think about it. We are here because of the quality of life. We don't want trucks. Not that we are against trucks, but trucks are not needed here anymore. We already have trucks. I live in Thirty-one Birch Terrace. I used to go to South Side where Mannheim exists, which is, Mannheim is the largest trade of cars. I know the how traffic patterns are there. There are about 1,000 employees there. Every time they go out, it creates a problem. They have breaks at certain times, they come out, so traffic is constant. Traffic is constant because they have different times to break. So when you have so many people, 500 people working, they're going to come out to all the streets. So this is a constant thing. As long as you have narrow street, this is not going to work out. So what we need to do is have a skyway just back to Riverton. There's no other way. This shouldn't have come this far, period. I don't know how this came this far. Actually, we should think of having a different project in this place. That's all I got to say. I'm here because of that. I'm traveling to the South Side. Now it takes about 30 minutes for me to get to the turnpike south. Twenty-two years ago, when I moved here, it was 15 minutes. And like somebody mentioned, there's a narrow bridge which we cross over to the other side of East France Street when you go on Borden Town. That's very narrow, so truckers aren't going to use that. So are you going to handle this? Because everybody's talking about roads, but the reason is we have to connect ourselves to Route Nine, the turnpike, the 34 or whatever, 35, and the 18. I take those roads every day, and I know the time. Over 20 years, it has added two and a half time. So it takes about half an hour for me to get to East France right now, at a busy time. And also, also the trucks are very dangerously approaching from Route Nine, and center at the bank. I would post for everybody to see videos, because I'm a producer. So I, I'm going to post videos all over and tell people how the trucks are moving.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We appreciate it, thank you.
You have no money, no, no...
All right, can I have a motion to close to the public?
Public portion.
Have a second.
Come on up, come on up, two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, to clarify, we did not close the public portion.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Bob Duffy, 111 Mary Avenue, Searville.
Say Bob Duffy.
I don't have the credentials as these gentlemen have. But I drove an 18-wheeler for 32 years. I've been in town with the tractor-trailer, been to Dupont, Hercules, every, oh. I'm telling you now, that Cheesequake Road and Cheesequake Road, the path that they have coming out of there. When you make a right, you have to go into oncoming traffic. And you have a turn lane and a regular lane. Fifty-three feet with a, with a sleeper, and by it's over 75 feet. He has to swing way out wide to make the turn to go west on Borden Town Avenue. There's a light there, there's always going to be cars. They're going to have to back up so he can make his turn. That's that way. You go the other way, you have to swing wide. The cars that are going west at that light have to back up because the trailer's going to go over their lane. Okay? Now, go to Ernston Road and Borden Town. Oh, he can make a right and go to Route Nine. Going to, going to take every pole down. Unless he turns into oncoming traffic and has to back up all the cars so he can make his turn. And I think everybody here has been in a park where the truck had to do that. I don't think anybody said no. You always have to back up to give the truck room to swing around. And here's the bad one. If you went straight down Borden Town Avenue and you went on to Route Nine north, you can't swing around and stay in the right lane. You have to go out to the center lane because your trailer will hit the embankment. On Route Nine, I don't care what time of the day it is, they're going down there 65 miles an hour. He sits there for 20 minutes, the trailer, cars back up, going underneath the bridge, down Borden Town Avenue. There ain't no quality of life for the people of Searville. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. I'll entertain a motion to close...
I have a motion to close the public portion.
And I have a second.
Mr. Chairman, you told me that I could go back.
If we had time, I said you could go back. Everybody had to speak.
We have a second.
Can I have a second?
Motion.
All in favor? All in favor, opposed?
Anybody from the board have anything to say on this?
Yeah, I do. Mr. Chairman, a couple of things that were brought up that I kind of like. Mrs. Mahoney brought up no idling on the site. And if the board's favorable tonight, I'd like to have a condition of approval that there be no truck idling on the site. The applicant's acceptable to, agrees to that? Okay, and one thing Mr. Robinson brought up that I kind of like. He mentioned that you could, there's only 2,000 feet between your building and the exit onto Borden Town.
That's exactly what I would like to speak to.
Well, I'm speaking to it now, thank you, Jim. It allows you to start getting permits while this is being developed, rather than waiting to get permits when your future phases of the redevelopment come about.
Can we make it a condition?
Can I comment on this?
Yeah, please.
I think it's worth noting that, that the extension, the Hartle Street extension, we are in the process of designing and, and working on approvals for that. We're not waiting around. It is, as Mr. Cornell said, it's environmentally sensitive, the route is tricky, the approvals will take, you know, probably another year to get fully approved, which in the, in the timeline that we're talking about here is not bad, because in a year, the, the first section won't be finished. But it's our goal to have the, the Hartle Street extension approved within the next year, and then we plan to roll right into Section Three at that time. So it is part of the plan, but we started this whole process with the idea that we were coming in for Section One, following the guidelines of the redevelopment plan, and then we were going to be moving into, to Section Three.
So where's your construction access going to be right now? Is, is there any way to get construction access off of Borden Town into this site?
Off of Borden Town, no.
No?
Jerry, you first.
And I...
Well, I think the, the problem is, the property that they're developing only has access on Cheesequake Road, so their construction access will be Borden Town Avenue to Cheesequake Road to get to the site.
Oh, right.
I, I think it's also worth noting, we, we talked a lot about the, the Borden Town-Cheesequake intersection. That improvement is part of Section One. We are doing a major expansion and, and enlargement. It's all going to be driven, that's, that's county approval, so we're with the county trying to hammer that out, but it will almost certainly be new traffic signals, wider lanes, and moving the, you know, some of the, of the infrastructure that's by the Quick Check now. That's all happening as part of, of Section One. That's not a Section Three thing. We're doing that now.
Mr. Chairman, that, that is correct. I've had conversations with Middlesex County, because we also have concerns about the existing configuration of that intersection. It was stated by the public that property has to be acquired. That's not accurate. Property has already been dedicated to the county. Twenty feet of, along Borden Town Avenue, both the Quick Check and the adjacent shopping center, ten feet either side on Cheesequake Road, dedicated to the boroughs. So there's significant room that has already been dedicated to the county to allow for intersection improvements, and the county has taken the position that they're going to want to see those improvements done in conjunction with this application. And that intersection is under their jurisdiction, not the borough's.
All right, so that would, that would address some of Mr. Duffy's concerns.
Public portion is closed.
Mr. Chairman, you let the applicant speak after the public portion was closed. You should reopen it. You said you let the applicant speak, and the public should not comment on that testimony. So you shouldn't.
Make a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Anyone from the public wish to speak?
Yes, I'd like to speak.
Come on up. Remind you, there'll be two-minute limit, please.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
We're giving you two minutes.
Eleven Burrell Square.
Eleven Burrell?
Burrell Square in Farley. I want you to know I'm not anti-warehouse, and these people aren't anti-warehouse. I was the chair of the planning board when all the warehouses on the Main Street extension were built. And we built the Main Street extension for those warehouses. So that's not the issue. The issue is traffic and traffic mitigation. Now, the thing that I mentioned that Mr. Daddio picked up on, those internal roads are there. That's how I knew about them. They're there already. Hercules uses them. Hercules employees use them. They should be investigated. Now, you can be heroes. You can bring jobs, you can bring ratables, I don't know if there's a pilot involved or not, nobody's saying. Well, the engineer said there would be a pilot. You can be a hero if you do this right. If you do what the escrow ordinance allows you to do, hire your own consultants, independent consultants, to advise you on traffic, to advise you on the environment, because there are a lot of environmental concerns here. We didn't hear anything about the environment on a site that we know is contaminated. You can be a hero collectively. You can be heroes if you do this right. On the way in, Mr. Daddio said this was going to be voted on tonight. There's no need to do that because you'll want to do it tonight. Do it the right way. Put the protections in there, put the conditions in there so that we don't add traffic. The master plan calls for a, a road to Cheesequake Road. The reexamination of the master plan says that you shouldn't do anything to burden the infrastructure, and the M L U L says the same thing. And Mr. Daddio has asked me a few times to please say this is a permitted use. It is a permitted use if they comply with the conditions. That means the master plan, the master plan reexamination, and the state statute.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. We appreciate your comments.
So you can't say A equals B equals C if B doesn't equal C. So if they don't comply with the road, which is in the master plan, they're not complying. They are then not permitted. And when you hang your hat on, oh, oh, we have to do what the redevelopment study said we must, Mr. Daddio just said he helped write the redevelopment study.
The plan, the...
Redevelopment plan. So I hope you're not taking, I, I don't mean this if you're a friend of mine, Mike. I hope you're not taking pride in the fact that you wrote in a, a plan that says we can put in a million square feet of warehouse and we don't have to put a road for them to go for God knows how many years, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years.
It came before Sarah.
We don't know that. Let me ask one final question. Is manufacturing permitted in that zone?
Yes.
It is.
Entertain a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your courtesy.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Well, do I?
Anyone?
Do you have something to add?
Well, I wanted to respond to one thing. The suggestion that this isn't permitted is completely erroneous. We can talk all we want about the master plan, which everyone knows is a blueprint. What you have is an actual redevelopment plan with actual requirements, and we're completely in compliance with that redevelopment plan. There is not a single aspect of the development of those three, the three development lots that deviates from that plan in any way, shape, or form. And Sarah reviewed it on two occasions and made that determination. And there are obligations to do infrastructure, and we're doing, meeting every obligation that's in the redevelopment plan. And in terms of off-site traffic, Mr. Robinson was the chair of the planning board, and he knows what the, what the law is. The law is that, that the board cannot consider off-site traffic conditions when you're dealing with a permitted use with no variances that, that relate to that use whatsoever. If you're doing something that's permitted and something that's specifically tailored to meet every aspect of the redevelopment plan, the, the issues of off-site traffic, I understand why people are concerned about it, but it's, it's not, again, it's beyond the ability of this board to deal with those issues in connection with this application.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mahoney, if you're possible, you can...
Any discussions from the board on this application?
When you talk the road, do you...
Public portion is closed. It's closed, you're closed. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the application be approved with the stipulation that...
Just wait till they all have, I'm sorry. Be approved with, I didn't get that.
With the stipulation that no idling be done on the premises, and that they continue with their due diligence to get the roads complete and their applications in before the warehouses are completed. To the best of their ability.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, can I second it?
Mr. Janaris.
Who seconded that?
Rule call?
Rule call, please.
Mr. Diaddio?
Yes.
Mr. Allegra?
Yes.
Mr. Janaris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Marr?
No with comment. I'd like to see an independent traffic study.
Ms. Ochenge?
Yes.
Ms. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Palowski?
Yes.
And Chairman Davis?
Yes.
Application approved.
Thank you for everybody's time tonight.
Have a great night, everyone.
Okay, next on the agenda, old business, new business, administrative matters. Next meeting, it's August eighteenth. Jay?
There's two applications, Mr. Chairman. One is a minor subdivision, and the second is your redevelopment study that your planner has prepared for the national amusement property. You'll have your public hearing scheduled for that.
Okay, thank you, Jake. Make a motion to close during the meeting? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not.
Okay.
Well, do I?
Anyone?
Do you have something to add?
Well, I wanted to respond to one thing. The suggestion that this isn't permitted is completely erroneous. We can talk all we want about the master plan, which everyone knows is a blueprint. What you have is an actual redevelopment plan with actual requirements, and we're completely in compliance with that redevelopment plan. There is not a single aspect of the development of those three, the three development lots that deviates from that plan in any way, shape, or form. And Sarah reviewed it on two occasions and made that determination. And there are obligations to do infrastructure, and we're doing, meeting every obligation that's in the redevelopment plan. And in terms of off-site traffic, Mr. Robinson was the chair of the planning board, and he knows what the, what the law is. The law is that, that the board cannot consider off-site traffic conditions when you're dealing with a permitted use with no variances that, that relate to that use whatsoever. If you're doing something that's permitted and something that's specifically tailored to meet every aspect of the redevelopment plan, the, the issues of off-site traffic, I understand why people are concerned about it, but it's, it's not, again, it's beyond the ability of this board to deal with those issues in connection with this application.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mahoney, if you're possible, you can...
Any discussions from the board on this application?
When you talk the road, do you...
Public portion is closed. It's closed, you're closed. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the application be approved with the stipulation that...
Just wait till they all have, I'm sorry. Be approved with, I didn't get that.
With the stipulation that no idling be done on the premises, and that they continue with their due diligence to get the roads complete and their applications in before the warehouses are completed. To the best of their ability.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, can I second it?
Let me...
Mr. Janaris.
Who seconded that?
Rule call?
Rule call, please.
Mr. Diaddio?